We're good?
Yep.
Good.
Well, that's good.
Good.
Okay.
All right. Welcome, everybody. It's 6:31 PM. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Thanks for being here tonight. If you would just stand with me and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Lori, if you would call one please.
Yes, Councilmember Glover.
Here.
Billings. Here.
Gettle.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
And Robinson.
Here.
Thank you. All right, first up, we've got our Unified Fire Authority report. We'll hear from Chief Larson.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. It's a pleasure to be with you today. First up, I'm going to give the first quarter report of our run data. I apologize I didn't get this to you in April, but we just didn't get the report to us soon enough to be able to give that report to you the first part of April. So we'll just go ahead and jump right into that. You're familiar with the layout of this. For January, February, and March, we had a total of 888 incidents. 389 of those were emergent. That means that those calls required a paramedic to respond. Forty-four percent then of the 888 were the emergent percentage. Going across the top on our call type, the top fire calls are listed there along with the top EMS calls and the top other calls. You can see that falls is consistently number two, and we're trying to work with the health department on some type of a program at some of the senior centers to see if we can provide some education and prevention there. Then, of course, at the far right is the four-year monthly comparison. You can see we were down just a little bit this year from especially last year. And then on the bottom, the incoming units, that means these are units that responded within the city limits of Midvale. You can see that your Station 125 and 126 were the highest percentage. So what is that, about 97, 98%? And then the top ambulance responses, and I just caught this tonight, it doesn't list Station 125 ambulance. And I'm gonna get that fixed, but you can see there that the ambulance responses, 96% of them came from your stations. And then the emergent time, four minutes and 28 seconds in the 50th percentile, 50 times out of 100, we got there in that time, and the other 90 times out of 100 was in 6:44. You're familiar with the call type placement. Again, I'm a little colorblind. That's always hard for me to read, and so I like to refer to this, and that looks fairly familiar. That's consistent pretty much quarter to quarter. That shows the darker colors are the higher call volumes that we respond to. That's it for the quarterly report. Any questions for me? Okay, I'd like to move into just a few other items quickly. This morning, the UFA Board Finance Committee met, and we presented our budget. I'll let the mayor talk a little bit more about that, but we had an opportunity to present our budget to the board, all of our administration and our division chiefs. It was about three hours, I think. Is that what it went, Mayor? So anyway, we put a lot of preparation into that, and as all of you know, that once that's done and approved, you move right into preparing for the next year's budget. So looking forward to that. Our recruit camp, our recruits graduate on May 15th. I think we have 26 that are going to be graduating. They're really starting to grow and develop. Some of their firsts, and I'm sure that Councilmember Brown can relate really well to some of this, some of their firsts included wearing turnout gear, using an SCBA. That's the air pack that we wear when we go into a smoky environment. Fire hydrants, driving a fire truck, fighting exterior fires, fighting interior fires, searching and rescue ladders, extrication equipment, ventilation apparatus maintenance, wildfire hydraulics, flashover, and many other aspects of the job. Their mornings begin with a very vigorous physical workout, morning lectures, weekly exams, long afternoons on the drill ground. So the level of fitness required to do this job is eye-opening and can be quite a hurdle for some to overcome in the beginning. However, we've seen some vast improvement in their physical fitness, in their firefighting, their teamwork, their group camaraderie, and overall fitness. So we're happy to see them get through the camp and graduate and get assigned out in the field to serve our communities. The captain's promotional process is all done. We had 49 take the written test, and the list has been finalized. 20 are on the official promotional list, and when vacancies occur, we promote from that list. We have a lot of movement in our large organization from retirements and other promotions, so I wouldn't be surprised if we exhaust that list this time. Our Wildland Division, they're working through, let's see, actually, they've started May 6th focusing on training, getting ready for the wildland season. After the two weeks training, they'll be available for wildfire response, and we'll start working on risk reduction efforts. They go into various areas in our Wildland Urban Interface and do some trimming and try to clean up areas and provide a defensible space around structures and homes. So they're very busy doing that. And along with that, the fireworks restrictions map is going to be ready to be published on our website showing all the fireworks restricted areas in all of Salt Lake County and Eagle Mountain. We're required to have that map posted and completed by June 1st, so my thanks to council members and city staff for your diligence on getting that in place ahead of a lot of other cities. So we appreciate your work on the fireworks restrictions. And I mentioned the wildland. With this wet spring weather, I'm hoping that it stays wet. Otherwise, we're gonna have a lot of issues this year. Let's see, new apparatus. You have two new ambulances in your city, one at Station 125 and one at Station 126. At the Pancake Breakfast, they were giving tours of the new one at 126, a really nice four-wheel-drive ambulance. Pancake Breakfast, I'll just kind of veer off to that for a second. That was really great a couple of weeks ago, a lot of fun. The crews really enjoyed interacting with the community. I saw Captain Chad Page, just like a social butterfly, he was everywhere, you know, and they were giving station tours and tours of the apparatus, so it was really a fun event. So we've got two new ambulances at 125 and 126, and we have a new engine at 125 right over here. We were able to get that in place because of the crews' efforts. That was made possible. They loaded hose, mounted equipment, and they've already completed training on that new piece of equipment, so they're ready to go. Our safety message, the spring runoff, as soon as it starts to warm up, that could be well underway. With all the moisture we've received lately, I'm hoping it doesn't warm up really fast. We've got potential for some heavy runoff, the Jordan River and all the other tributaries in the valley. So we're asking our communities and our citizens to exercise extreme caution, pay close attention to children and pets. With fast-moving water, the riverbanks are eroding, and it's dangerous to stand near the edge because that could be undercut and it'd be easy to fall in. If someone or a pet does fall in, do not jump in after them, throw something to help and stay afloat, to help them stay afloat, and yell or call for help. The best thing you can do is just stay away until the runoff is over. That'll be posted. I sent that to Laura, so that should be posted on some of your social media. Lastly, on a more serious note, you may have noticed the black bands on my badge and Chief Thomas's badge. That's in recognition of the loss of one of our fellow officers, Sergeant Bill Hoosier from Santaquin, who died tragically in the line of duty, was killed tragically in the line of duty. Our hearts go out to the family, to all those affected. They're certainly in our thoughts and prayers, and it really brings to mind to me our brothers and sisters in blue. For us as firefighters, how much we appreciate them and all they do for us when we respond to calls. They keep the scene safe, they keep us safe, and they're just invaluable in their service and the risks that they take each and every day, and we so much appreciate them. And again, our heartfelt prayers and simply go out to the family. That's my report. I'd be happy to answer questions if there are any.
Thank you, Chief. No other question. I was just gonna remind the council, so the apparatus that the chief was just talking about that is new to UFA, as a reminder, we were supposed to get those like two years ago.
Yes.
And so I think the crews are quite excited. We've had some challenges with just aging vehicles, and we are finally starting to get them in, so.
And when we finally were able to start moving forward, there was a delay in getting, actually getting them. COVID set a lot of things back for a while, but we're happy to have them. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, we're now gonna move into public comments. For those of you that I'm sure many are here from the 900 East item, that will be a public hearing, so the public comments right now are for anything that are not scheduled for a public hearing. So we've got a public hearing on that item, a text amendment on our budget, so if you hear for any of those items, we will have an opportunity later in the council meeting. If you have a comment on any other item, you may step forward to the microphone and state your name for the record. You'll be given three minutes. Do we have any public comments?
And we'll make it like really clear at that time, because sometimes that gets kind of confusing in the agendas. Don't worry, we'll say, you know, here's that 900 South or 900 East situation, so.
So if you're, again, here for that or any of our other hearings tonight, we'll have an opportunity then. If you're not here for one of those items, you can come up now. And just please state your name for the record.
Mike Danzy.
Can we get a timer?
And the reason I'm here is one of your planners wants to change the width of driveways from, not driveways, but apartment approachways from 35 feet to 50. And years ago, my dad was selling part of his property, and he came down and says, "How much do I need to leave for a driveway?" And they told him 35 feet. So he left exactly that. Now we're trying to sell the property, and they're trying to change it to 50 feet. We can't get that because the property is owned by other people now, and we just have the 35 to get back into our property. And I was here a month ago for another meeting, and they said they were gonna drop it, and I just wanted to make sure that it was dropped.
Yeah, Adam, do you have information on this that you can provide?
Yeah, this came up at the Planning Commission. This was the discussion on the private streets versus public streets.
Gotcha.
And so that he was, this gentleman was at the Planning Commission and expressed his concern there. The Planning Commission, as I'll relate later, they were not so much in favor of the idea, and that's why I'm bringing it here tonight, just to kind of finish that out and see if there's an appetite from the council to move it forward. But that will be a discussion item later on in the agenda.
Yeah, okay, discussion item. But it's a discussion, not a hearing.
It's not a public hearing, just a discussion item later, but.
But when we're done here, will you speak with him a little bit about the difference between sort of existing roads and how this will affect, the potential will affect future roads, just to make sure we're clear on what's happening with that? Does that make sense? So again, we've got a long agenda, but if you want to hang out with us all tonight, we'll have a discussion as a council later. I don't know if you're on YouTube, but we also do stream our meetings on YouTube, so you're welcome to watch it then. And then generally, we have a discussion, and then it will come back to another meeting for action. Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other public comments? Not on a public hearing tonight? All right, seeing none, we're gonna move into reports. So for me, I'll start off with two fun things and then get into two more serious things. As the chief mentioned, we had a pancake breakfast at Fire Station 126 off of 7200 South. It was awesome, a lot of fun, very cold, did not expect it to be so cold that morning, but it was a great time, and I think the community really enjoyed getting to come out and see the trailer that had the earthquake simulation. I kept trying to tell all the adults there that even though it's made for kids, I've seen a lot of adults kind of nerd out in that thing and get excited, so I hope that they enjoyed it. We also opened up the Jordan Bluffs Park, so for those of you that may not be aware, Midvale has a brand-new park right down here off of 7800 Center Street area next to the Zion's Bank Building, so we just officially opened that up mid-last week and had everybody come and fly kites since it's windy up there, so that was fun. And then just my normal UPD update. So as a reminder to our council, the last time I think I talked about that, there was still negotiating going on between Slovisa, which is the taxing district that all the townships use, and Salt Lake County that is a part of that taxing district. So the sheriff's office was asking for 5.8 million from that. Slovisa approved 4.4, so significantly less than what she was asking for, but still a 63% increase of what they've previously had. But with that, the townships have to now cut 2.5% from their budget to make that work. In talking with Chief Thomas just earlier tonight, it sounds like they have figured that out. From my understanding, we should not really see an impact from that and all the organizational changes we've been seeing, but just for your awareness, they did come to an agreement, which is good for us and stability, and we'll see. I mean, this will still be something every year they'll have to continue to look at, but they did come to an agreement for this year. Lastly, UFA, again, as Chief Larson mentioned, we had our, it's kind of like a budget retreat for Unified Fire. All the division chiefs come in, have to explain their budget, what they're asking for. So I mentioned this the last time, but this budget has not passed, but the proposed budget is a 5.5% member fee increase. That's what everything comes to. The biggest changes are they are asking that Kearns gets a new ambulance. So one of the things that they look at is how often are, is UFA going into another area's service area versus how much are they coming into our area for mutual aid calls? They try to keep that pretty evenly split. Right now, West Valley and West Jordan are actually subsidizing Unified Fire over the last three years. We're at a 2,000-call deficit, which to them is kind of at a point of saying, "We've got an issue here, we need to pick up our own slack." So that's the biggest thing in the budget, to fully staff an ambulance with two folks, that is eight new FTEs, and so that was the biggest ask in there. That was talked about a lot of kind of making sure that they're backing up that data on, for that request. Otherwise, the biggest changes are for a couple of years now, Unified Fire has been working to bring in all of their IT services, really based on this idea of they were seeing a lack of service to their employees when they had something IT-related come up and that they could save money doing it. So we're seeing those cost savings, and they're also beginning to bring more fleet in-house as well, and so that was also in the proposal, was to bring in a new fleet mechanic instead of outsourcing. So again, that was what was presented today. The committee passed it on to the full board for review, but that hasn't passed yet. That's all I got, unless there's any questions. All right, Councilmember Billings?
Yeah, I just really quickly wanted to welcome everybody. I assume most people here tonight are from District 1, so I just wanted to welcome you here. I've spoken to many of you, received emails from many of you over the last couple of weeks, and I appreciate your engagement and your advocacy. That's one of the things that I think is going to help Midvale make really great decisions going forward, is seeing a room full of engaged citizens. So thank you so much for being here tonight and helping us to kind of see a vision and kind of move forward with that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Glover?
Tonight, I'd like to tell everyone that we have lots of water and the mosquitoes are out, okay? So it's time to get rid of the standing water and watch for mosquitoes, and they'll probably be relatively likely this year. That's all.
How fun. Thank you. Councilmember Robinson?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, just one thing I noticed that I kind of wanna see if we can sort of talk about or figure out is on that Axiom apartment complex that's on State Street, and for some reason, it sort of divides Sandy and Midvale, like half the townhomes and condos are now in High East District. They're in mine for a while. There's like this commercial component, you know, in front, and for some reason, they've built the Sandy side out and dumped all the dirt on the Midvale side, so there's these commercial buildings in front of these apartments. The Midvale, in front of the Midvale, is just these dirt wheat piles, you know. I don't know what we need to do to figure out how to engage with that group, to figure out when Midvale, you know, those Midvale side, because it just, like our sign's there, "Welcome to Midvale," and it's instantly crappy. Like, what do we need to do to sort of help our, you know, I want to put our best foot forward, kind of just falls into that pattern of, well, Sandy, you know, bigger and better. Like, what do we need to do to help that? I think that's something we should look at. You know, generally, one, our code should just allow them to pile dirt on State Street to gather weeds. So even if they're not building yet, I kind of mentioned this before, you know, developers should have to infill it and keep it up if they're not gonna do anything, you know, recently, kind of like next to Kids Empire over by, you know, the grocery store. It's like, has some cement pipes in it and garbage, like, you know, they should zero-scape that if they're not gonna build it or whatever.
We can definitely have code enforcement check it out for weeds and whatnot, but just the second part of that, there is a site plan moving forward on that piece, and so we're assuming it will be developed soon. It's moving through the planning division right now.
That's great news, because I saw the other day while I was just walking around, I'm like, right where the sign starts, it looks, it just looks bad for Midvale, so, thank you.
So are you talking about the site that's over in Big Junction, or are you talking about the one over on State?
The one on State.
Okay, perfect, thank you. That's all. Thank you. Councilmember Gettle?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple things real quick. I was also at the Jordan Bluffs Park dedication. It was very fun. We had a kite decorating event as well, so that was fun, being told to go fly a kite by constituents and meeting an actual kite this time, so that was good. I wanted to mention too, on the Animal Services Board on which I serve, they have purchased and have fixed up and are ready to launch a mobile pet clinic, so basically a PetMobile that they're going to, they're gonna try to have at the member cities. There's 13 member cities of the Salt Lake County Animal Services, and they're gonna try to have that mobile pet clinic twice a year, hopefully maybe at City Hall where you can bring your dogs or cats for low-cost vaccines, at low-cost spay and neuter as well. So that's really exciting. I got to tour the, I don't know what else to call it, but like, it's a spay and neuter mobile, and it's a pretty cool thing. It's a very nice resource to have for the county. Sometimes spay and neutering can take six months, eight months. A lot of doctor's offices are way far behind on those, and they're also very costly if you get it done at your vet, so it's gonna be a good thing. I will make sure that we have info whenever they want to come to Midvale, and that way we can let our folks know in the community to take advantage of that service. And finally, I just wanted to welcome our audience here. I don't think I've ever seen this many people here for a meeting, so that could be good, it could be bad, we'll see. But just anytime we have this type of engagement from our community, it's a great thing. We are your government servants, and we're here to listen to you, so welcome everyone. That's it for me, Mayor.
Thank you. City Manager Dalton?
Nothing to report this evening.
Okay. I've just been told we have some folks who were, usually our council meetings start at 7:00. They don't often start at 6:30, but we didn't have as much for a workshop tonight, so we usually bump it forward. I've just been told we've got some folks here for a general public comment that thought we were starting at 7:00, so I'm just gonna invite, if you can come up and give public comment, if you'd like to.
There's chairs up front, too, if somebody wants to sit down.
Yeah. And you'll just be given three minutes, and just please state your name for the record.
Okay. This is the first time.
Well, welcome.
So we're gonna announce that we have a new restaurant that's opening.
Can you just state your name?
Oh, yes, Shufi Pan.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so we have a new restaurant that's opening, and it's gonna be a sushi restaurant. So as I know, like back in the 300 to 500 BCE time, sushi is known as one of the oldest culinary cuisine on earth. So it first started in Japan and expanded all over the world, and it served everywhere, small as a neighborhood takeout and to like a Michelin-starred restaurant. So for sushi fans all over the United States, there's a handful of sushi restaurants that can hold like a candle compared to like the sushi restaurants in Japan. Our restaurant, Sukia Sushi and Japanese Restaurant Buffet, is gonna be aiming for, to become Utah's destination for sushi, so that's our goal. We're gonna have over 40 special rolls, and there's gonna be classic rolls, there's gonna be sashimis, and all kinds of fresh fish that's made freshly from our sushi chef team. And above that, we're gonna have over 100 dishes buffet-styled, including snow crab, steaks, pastries, all kinds of desserts from all over the world that's gonna be served in our buffet.
When do you open and where is it located?
So it's gonna locate it, oh, I don't have that. This is awkward, but it's gonna be in Midvale. A great announcement.
Six square miles, Fort Union area, this area.
It's gonna be this area. It's really close to the City Hall. Um it's going to be this area, it's really close to the City Hall.
Great.
Excited about that.
And so can I sign my paycheck right over to you guys?
Yes, yes, we are going to be ready for that.
When do you, when are you opening?
Um we're opening really soon, like we don't have a date yet, but like we're expecting this month.
Okay, well, let us know.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, since we reopened it, I'm going to try this one more time. Any comments not related to a public hearing? Okay, so with that, we'll move into our first public hearing of the night, uh which is consider a rezon request to add the regional commercial residential overlay zone to a property located at seven thousand one south nine hundred east. We hear from Vendalee.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um I'm bringing a zone change to you today. And yeah, you may know the property, it's on nine hundred east, just north of Fort Union. Um that exclamation mark on the aerial image is sort of the frontage of this parcel. You may remember there used to be an office building on this parcel that burned down in twenty twenty-one. And you can see that on this aerial image. Um I also have a Google image of what it used to look like. So this was uh mostly medical offices, uh not very tall building, two stories. And um since it burned down, there hasn't been any development activity. Um but we have a an applicant who um is asking for a zone change. Currently, this parcel is zoned RC, which is regional, regional commercial, just like many of the neighboring properties. To add a little bit of background, the current zone allows buildings of a maximum height of seventy-five feet. And this regional commercial zone has a wide variety of uses that it allows. Anything from a car wash, a barber shop, a hotel, a financial institution, a large office building, a hospital, a hotel, motel, so you you can see the variety is is quite large. What the applicant um is requesting is a change that adds the regional commercial residential overlay. And this regional commercial residential overlay um allows for also for adding a residential use. And the code gives two options for users, either just straight multifamily or mixed use. Also, a little more background to this, this is a page out of our general plan. The general plan, as you may remember, designates what are named opportunity areas. And an opportunity area is, you could say, a section of the city or a neighborhood um where the city would expect change. And this change um would normally be expressed in a change in zoning or a change in the intensity of how um we believe the city um would be used. So for example, redevelopment could happen in an opportunity area. And the parcel, it's a little hard to see, is just north of the Fort Union Opportunity Area. And um land use plans are, you know, they're policy statements that the city council makes. And they are advisory to what happens, you know, really in the daily operations of a city. So if someone applies for a zone change in this example, we consider as the city what our land use plan and our general plan say about this area. It's it's tries to set a certain path. And if, when you look at this, you see that the borders of this particular area is sort of like a zigzag pattern. It's it's not like a zoning map where everything is very precise. When we are, we're looking into the future with a um general plan and the land use portion that you see here. And um um if you keep that in mind, then you can also um sort of internalize a little more that it's, it is a document that's that's trying to direct policy, but it's not meant to be something that's precise. The precision, precision comes when this gets translated into zoning. Another piece that I wanted to make sure everyone in the room is privy to um has to do with cities' operations, and this is general really for every city in Utah. A zone map amendment, or I've also called it a zone change, that's sort of the common term, is um set in place by state law, and there's a specific process. And this process requires that first the planning commission um discusses a zone change and makes a recommendation. The planning commission cannot approve or deny a zone change in that sense. They don't have the authority to do that. Um they just make a recommendation to the city council. And they can recommend denial, they can recommend approval. And when that has happened, no matter what it is, denial or approval, then this item moves on to the city council because you are the, what's called the land use authority in in this particular process, and you have the right um to make a definite y or n decision on on this type of item. Here's one of our notice signs. Um it seems the more notice has worked because I believe most of the citizens in the room today are here for this item. And we received a lot of public comment um for the previous two planning commission meetings. Um this was advertised for, you have received this comment. And there was a lot of comment that was repeated. Many people felt they just wanted to make their voice heard again and wanted to make sure that you as the city council also really see their comment. I believe all comment was on the negative side of the spectrum towards this application. And I'm sure you'll hear more from the citizens, but the themes were that traffic in this area is already a problem. Uh and therefore, we shouldn't add more residential development, that that was a common theme. Another theme was that a very large structure like the one that's shown in this concept um would be detrimental to people's well-being in the neighborhood, that it would in any way change their way of life. In connection with that, height of the structure was mentioned repeatedly. And parking, there's been a feeling that if if there were to be a higher density residential use on this parcel, that parking may spill out from this property into residential neighborhoods in the area. And the concern that um zone change and future development on this parcel would somehow depress property values, that was also expressed. And there was a lot more that I'm sure the citizens will share with you. Um the planning commission had a good discussion, and they unanimously recommended denial of this. And um they are, during their discussion, they expressed a few things like the appropriateness of residential in this particular location and also of course, what impacts higher density residential development has. This is now the concept that was attached to the application. This is um the floor plan, on the first floor, you see a lot of podium parking, so most of this is inside of the building, and some of it is also surface parking. Um on the frontage, on nine hundred east, there is a commercial component that's shown of forty-five hundred square feet. And on the, what would be the northwestern corner of the building um is the clubhouse or the leasing office. Overall, this concept shows um a seven-story building. This here shows, you know, conceptual landscaping, and it also shows some of the potential amenities, a pool, some deck space, and so forth. And some conceptual renderings of what something like this may look like. The applicant may go further into this, this is something that the applicant also provided, that's a study from their point of view, that is trying to compare what their proposal would look like and what a comparable commercial building, like an office building, would be like. And um just roughly, if you look at this, the red building is the current conceptual proposal. The yellow would be the footprint of a potential office building. Whenever we look at a zone change, as the city, we of course have rules on how to deal with a zone change, and the municipal code has a section that tries to put some structure to the analysis for you. And a zone change, of course, is a legislative action. And um with our three criteria, the ones that are really in play in in this particular application are the general plan, and if this application provides something that we are looking for in the general plan. So the argument can be made that we have a community need for housing. This would provide housing, therefore, number one would be a potential finding that could be made. And if if you read this carefully, um you don't have to necessarily fulfill all items on here. For example, number two, a zone change can never really um fulfill at this point in time. We don't really have clerical errors in our zoning map. Also, number three may come into play. In this particular case, of course, the land in and of itself has changed. There was a big fire. Currently, the parcel is vacant, and therefore, the public interest would be served if this were to be redeveloped. Um vacant parcels of land don't necessarily add to the city, there's no value of something being vacant in that sense. And oftentimes, vacant land can also become a nuisance. So with that, I mean, it's, I guess, becomes your task to decide your what, what type of reasoning you you would follow. Do you believe this particular application fulfills a community need? Or do you believe that yes, there may be a community need that's fulfilled, but on the other hand, there would also be impacts that you do not want to see on this particular parcel? So this this is a legislative decision. A lot of it really depends on on your values and that you also express in behalf of your constituents. And um whatever type of motion you pass, it always helps to have a finding so that the motion doesn't just stand there out in the open. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Um we do have the applicant here. So um council, if there's questions for Vendalee at this time, otherwise the applicant will also speak for a moment, and then we can take clarifying questions before we get into the public hearing.
I just have one clarifying question, and it was a theme of a lot of the public comments that we received, and it was um a general sense among a few people that we didn't properly noticed, notice this hearing. And so is that something, before we get into anything else, because if we didn't properly notice the the hearing, then we need to do it another time. Um so is that something that we can speak to and say that we definitely did, or you know, what those concerns were?
Yeah, um yeah, I can speak to that real quick. Um we have a process for noticing that's locked in by state law and also by our own local municipal code. And as part of that, we advertise a hearing on the city's website on the Utah Public Notice website, and then just with a paper notice upstairs on the door and in our notice box out here in the lobby. In addition to that, we send out letters. And the letters are generated by a service that Salt Lake County provides. One inputs an address and a radius for noticing, and then um the addresses are being generated. Unfortunately, this process with the county is not perfect. Um in this particular case, there was a hangup, and there is a hangup because the addresses within the county's system are not always complete. Um as an example, in Essex Court, there will be an, you know, home number, a normal address, but it doesn't have unit numbers. And so we've gotten quite a few of the notices back. And there's really no way for us to to pack down exactly where people live. And so that's, I I believe, one thing that's um that some of the neighbors have seen that their neighbor got a notice, but they didn't.
So because we noticed it in several other avenues, then we've met our legal requirement, and that's probably something for Garrett to affirm or deny.
So seventeen three nine of our code lays that out, just like Vendalee was saying, that requires public notice on the webs, on the Utah Public Notice website, the city's website, and then mailed to record owners um within the affected, uh of each parcel within certain radiuses. And then also, I believe he also provided a picture of the public notice that was placed on the property. Since I'm not involved per se in the exact noticing thing, I can't speak directly, but it sounds like our planning department followed all the necessary steps.
So it it doesn't then matter if there was the snafu with the county? So it doesn't then matter if there was the snafu with the county system? That's just kind of an unfortunate byproduct of human error.
I believe so and you also have to recognize that Midvale has chosen to go beyond the state's requirements with noticing. We actually hold more hearings than we are required by state law. And I think it's a given, the more often you do this type of a process, at some point, all the neighbors, you know, we have good neighborhoods, the Midvale people talk with each other. They will have gotten notice. And even if, you know, unfortunately, we don't have the resources that we could knock on doors. For example, even a letter doesn't necessarily guarantee that someone really, looks to their mail in a timely manner, for example, it's, you know, we do what we can, but it's never unfortunately perfect.
Okay, so then just the bottom line to the question is we did everything we legally needed to do to have this public hearing tonight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other clarifying questions before we invite the applicant up? Okay, Adam, is that right? Come on up.
My name is Adam Paul for the record. Mayor and council, it's a pleasure to be before you tonight. We appreciate you hearing us. I've been a real estate developer in the county for the past twenty-five years, working mostly in multifamily. And the owners of the property, the Begumian family have owned this property for about twenty-five years and intend to continue to own the property even through and after it's redeveloped. Just wanted to make that clear that we, you know, we're coming in good faith and we want to be good neighbors and also be a part of the community building here. So I think Ventolin did a great job. I asked for a presentation on my own to be put up as well, just so I could highlight a few of the items that we went over very clearly because I think we're here tonight after the planning commission meeting because we didn't feel like there was a few things that were heard very clearly. And we just want to take a little more time and effort to do that. Let's see if I can get this to work. So our opinion is, after we've reviewed the materials that the city has provided, the master plan, the zone, this overlay zone, the regional commercial residential overlay zone. And the idea behind it was very much in favor of making this property a candidate for this overlay zone. You can see here, the red in the Fort Union area is the current zone called RC. The subject property is darkened there, but it's really hard to tell. I'll try to point, I don't know if I need to, it's, you know, it's up at the top there.
Thank you.
So this zone, RC, you can see a couple of other places in the zone where the hatched red squares are, the overlay has been applied at this point. Did someone, can someone tell me how to point with this? On the side or on the top?
It's at the top to the left of the dark red spot. I feel like we can see it.
You can see. I want to point to the hatch, the other spots there.
Clearly, they don't train any of us.
Okay, there we go. These areas here, these are other areas that have been, where this overlay zone has been applied. And this is obviously the subject property. So we thought the RC zone was something that the city was considering to be an area that would be very, it has a lot of future development in mind, this area. We believe that the city has wanted this to become more of an active area, more walkable and have more residents living in it. So that's where our, you know, our idea came and why we're here tonight. Ventolin explained this very well. This is the criteria for determining whether a property is a candidate for being rezoned. And we won't go over this because I think he addressed it very well. Doesn't need to meet all three of these. In fact, it's an either/or in all of them. We think this one definitely meets number one and number three. Number one, because the general plan, we believe, does speak to a need for more housing in the community. And number three, because the character of the land is obviously has changed. The surrounding environments are changing and therefore we think it's a candidate for this. We pulled from the land use general plan here that at the very bottom, you'll see that the statement under this idea of these opportunity areas and this overlay zone is given. And I'll just read this here. Given the limited availability of vacant land in Midvale, housing and jobs for future population growth will need to come by changing existing land uses in appropriate areas to higher density residential and commercial uses. Again, Ventolin explained this very well. I think we want to just reiterate that this property is just outside of this, what we call bubble planning of what this opportunity area of Fort Union is. Even the master plan does say these, I don't know if you can see at the bottom here, the plume in blue colors are for illustration purposes only. So we felt that the planning, the planning commission might have made a decision based on, well, it's outside of this opportunity area. And so we just want to be very clear. We think that the code was saying this is just for illustration purposes. And we wanted to make that point extra clear tonight. Let's see, then we get into the purpose of this overlay. And we, I won't go through all of these, but it asked us to go through, why does this property, what does it do to meet certain criteria? We've gone through and itemized every item that the zone asks for this property, the plan that we present meet. And we've spent a lot of time working on the plan to make sure it meets these these requirements of this zone or this overlay that it does not yet have. Obviously, it probably does not yet have. But if it were to be awarded this zone, we would go through and make sure that we accomplish all of these goals of the overlay zone to provide a development that enhances the community and provides healthy, safe housing and actually improves the area, not detracts from it. Again, I won't go over each one of these. We wanted to illustrate that the property as of right currently, the RC zone, allows for a building to be built and there, you know, a concept plan has been put together that would be an office building that we've tried to outline in yellow. It's shown that that is at the current RC zone allows for a building to be of this height and these setbacks. And so we thought, well, let's be good neighbors and let's be, let's work in a spirit of cooperation. Let's make this building smaller than what the current zone even allows. And so really what we're asking for is that the city is saying, we do need housing. So we're okay with the change of use. In other words, if it's going to be a building of this general setback in this size, do we want it to be office or do we want it to be housing? And so that's what we were trying to show here is that we're trying actually to make it a less impactful on a massing point from what the current zone already allows for. Couple of, just a few angles there. This is looking south, southwest a little bit to show that particularly the Essex Court, we're trying to get, you know, we're trying to push the building as far back as we could and still have a building that works from Essex Court. Similar point here, yellow would be the footprint of a building that the current zone allows for. And the red would be the building we proposed to be built, be set back even further than what the current zone allows for. We did a study of the buildings that would be impacted the most, the homes and the properties in Essex Court that would be impacted the most. And at the top, you can see we did a, what they call a site section. So we, oh, did I make a mistake?
Hold the button, it can sometimes send them to black.
There it is, thank you. The point being that we put a resident standing potentially in front of their building under, in front of, at their place, looking at the existing code building. So they would certainly over the tree buffer that we would be required to plant, see the top of the building from these closest buildings in Essex Court. The proposed building has a further setback and is about the same height. It's actually maybe a foot or two shorter. And so it's showing that the visibility becomes much, much less impactful to these these buildings here. And this is only showing, I don't know if you remember from the site plan, that the building actually has an E shape. So this is showing certain parts of the building won't even be seen at all by someone that may be standing on the ground here in Essex Court. So I just wanted to make that clear that we are, we're asking and believe that the city per its mission statements and its master plan is looking for more housing. And this is an opportunity, if the city sees it as one that's fit, to provide that. There's been some comments on traffic impact, like to address that quickly. The two things of note, the current zone again would allow for an office building that would require twice as much parking as we have to provide and will provide for our apartment development. So there's likely to be twice as many cars coming in and out of the property under an office development code. The other thing is that this is a U dot road, ninth east is a U dot road. And if U dot determines that there will be significant impact on the traffic patterns or they may require certain improvements to the road, we may have to participate in certain improvements and we're happy to do that as required. There's been talk of maybe there'd be another light that may be needed. I don't know if that's desirable or not, but if U dot determines these things are helpful in controlling traffic, we'd want to of course be amenable to that. There's been some comments, just for general reference, that there's plenty of apartments in the area with plenty of vacancy. We have completed a pretty sophisticated market analysis that shows that through the next four to five years at least, there's going to be very little vacancy in the apartment market. To, as a point of reference, a seven percent vacancy rate, which is what's projected over the next five to six years, is considered essentially a fully occupied market because it's so hard to keep properties actually 100% occupied. So we think there's need and demand and we're trying to provide that through this proposal. We appreciate your time and consideration in this.
Thank you. Any final questions for staff or the applicant? All right. Before we get into public comment, I just want to say a couple of things. One thing to keep in mind is for the council as well, we don't approve projects, we approve zones. So just keeping that, we have to keep that in mind, this council does as they make decisions about. Because even if we approve a zone and they present this project, if it fits within the zone, they can change it. We have that happen with projects we're real excited about and we don't get the thing we wanted. We've also seen projects that we don't like and something better comes in. So we're not actually approving the project, it's the zoning and what's allowed in the zoning. The other thing is, this is not necessarily a Q and A. If there, this is for your chance to express your thoughts, opinions, concerns, all of that. If there comes up any items that we need to address afterwards, then we can direct staff to do so. But it's not necessarily a back and forth. You will all be given three minutes each. You want to speak, I want to give you the opportunity to speak, but I'm going to ask that you please stick to that three minutes. We're going to have a timer up, you can see yourself, please time yourself. I do not want to have to, it's uncomfortable to ask somebody and knowing the impact that you know, that you're going to express this will have on you. It's real uncomfortable for me to step in and say, hey, I need you to stop talking. But I will do that if we need to. I want to make sure that you all have the time to be able to do that. So just please respect that three minutes. I think that's all I have. With that, I would entertain a motion to open up the public comment.
May I make one more comment? We are part of this presentation and the idea behind this proposal of making a building that would be less impactful than the current zone was that we're willing to be held to that. We know that there's this idea that, you know, that we could show something and build something differently. So this idea of a development agreement where we could potentially be required to stick to certain restrictions is very much in our willingness to do if that becomes something that is relevant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
May I move that we open up public hearing?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, open up the public hearing. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, we will open up the public comment for this item. You can come on up and just please state your name for the record.
My name is Dennis Poole. I'm here on behalf of KME Development and David Ride. I'd like to make a comment about the notice before my clock starts to run, if I may. I'm going to read from your ordinance as to notices. It says if at or prior to the public hearing, an admission or defect in a mailed notice is brought to the attention of the reviewing body, the reviewing body shall determine whether or the admission or defect impairs or has impaired a surrounding property owner's ability to participate in the public hearing. That same section says, the purpose of the notice is to reasonably inform surrounding property owners and jurisdictions of an application for development. That hasn't occurred, that hasn't impacted those that didn't get notice. Guess I still spent thirty seconds there. As to this particular development, my concern is satisfying the requirements for change in your zoning ordinances. Your staff, they're put up the three provisions. The first one is, was not quite emphasized correctly. It's requirement number one is proposed rezoning is necessary to either, to comply with the general plan. Well, it doesn't comply with the general plan if the zoning overlay is already not there or to provide land for a community need that was not anticipated at the time of the adoption of the general plan. Your general plan did look at housing needs. This is not something that wasn't anticipated. If I read from your master plan under residential development, housing, it says, the first goal is to maintain and strengthen stable neighborhoods, preserving the quality and character of existing neighborhoods. The fifth provision there says, encourage higher density residential in appropriate locations in opportunity areas. It doesn't say expand opportunity areas. In the Fort Union discussion of your plan, it says that the area is front, properties on the north, fronting on Fort Union Boulevard on the north, South Union Avenue, Hillcrest High School on the south. So it does define the area of this particular master plan or overlay zone as those fronting on Fort Union Boulevard. This does not. So therefore, it is a requirement that there be a change not anticipated. This was anticipated, you studied this issue, it was part of your master plan. You cannot now change it without another reason and that reason does not exist. I want to say this, if this zone is approved, it's inappropriate, but if it is approved, you have to look what the consequences are going to be. The consequences are that you have now authorized thirty, excuse me, eighty-five units per acre. The consequences are that you have now authorized 30, excuse me, 85 units per acre. That is 200 units for this particular property. And the only standards that have to be met are height, parking, and unit count. There is nothing else that the planning commission can use or impose upon the site if they want to put in that apartment. That is not consistent with this neighborhood.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
I live in Essex Court. I've lived in Essex Court for 31 years. I've been on the management committee for about 25 of those years. The homeowners of Essex Court are opposed to the rezoning of the parcel of property at 7,001 South 900 East and agree with Midvale Planning Commission in its recommended denial of the Zone Man Amendment to add the regional commercial, uh, residential overlay to this property. Essex Court is a landlord community of 72 homes, townhomes. There are 134 people that live in Essex Court. We have a diverse community of seniors, single people, married couples with and without children. It is a community with a park-like atmosphere with many trees and a large green space for community members to enjoy. We believe, we believe that the most important issue regarding this proposed zoning change will be the destruction of the tranquility and quality of life enjoyed by a community that was established 45 years ago. That was before it was incorporated into Midvale City. Essex Court does not directly connect to a dedicated city street. It has only one way in, one way out. It's an easement right of way that goes from the entrance to Essex Court to 900 East. It was obtained, this easement was obtained in August of 1978. It's our only ingress egress to 900 East. Adding the proposed 700-story, 200, 7-story, 200-unit apartment complex with more than 264 vehicles, it's going to create a major commuting grid block nightmare at all times for Essex Court and others. And it's not just because of the congestion that will be created by the overall population increase, but the major increase in traffic. 900 East is not a freeway, as you know, and trying to make a left turn southbound between 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM is a very daunting task. It's a big challenge because the vehicle traveled from 6,600 to Fort Union is bumper to bumper, just about every day. So Essex Court suggests to the city council that before rezoning to accommodate residential housing of any type be approved, the following be considered. How will a zoning impact, change, zoning change impact the existing communities around the parcel? Does it, does what is proposed to be built enhance or diminish the value and lifestyle
Ed, I'm going to ask you to wrap up.
Of those neighborhoods?
Thank you. I, I appreciate it. One really important thing I forgot to mention is we received, uh, council member Geltel kind of mentioned it, we received a lot of, uh, written public comment for this. We have reviewed that, that will be included in the minutes, um, of this meeting, just for you all to be aware.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Matthew Randall and I'm a concerned resident of the Midvale community. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak about this rezoning. I stand before you not just as a resident, but as someone who has witnessed firsthand the serious safety issues that already plague our community, particularly along 900 East where I currently live. The area, the area has seen multiple tragic accidents, including collisions that have led to fatalities with cars during busy times, as well as cars parked on the street. An out of control driver actually struck a power pole right next to this lot, which causing it to break and fall into the street, causing a high voltage, um, electrical emergency in the vicinity. Most distressing, a drunk driver actually drove off of 900 East and into my house, which we just finished fixing the brick. A terrifying incident that brings the reality of the traffic danger right to my doorstep. These experiences compel me to voice my opposition in the proposed development, which would significantly increase the density of both housing and traffic in the area already struggling with safety and congestion. Developments such as the Springs of Country Woods apartment, the Orchard of Country Woods apartment, the North Union apartment, the ICO Fort Union apartment, the Ascent Apartments, the Stonehaven Apartments, along with, uh, other small multifamily units scattered within a half mile radius, which currently on the Census Bureau shows of 1,032 vacant, uh, units, have already increased traffic substantially in the 900 East and Fort Union Boulevard. These additions to a high density building in particular is alarming. Initial plans would have, which have already seen opposition due to their scale and insufficient parking, indicating that the development and ex, ex, calibrate these issues. The lack of sufficient parking along it would be a clear indicator that the influx of more residents and vehicles would spill onto 900 East, a street or a burden with traffic and prone to accidents. Furthermore, the proposed building scale, a plan of six stories or even a four-story structure, is predominantly low-rise community, does not align with the character or infrastructure capabilities of our area. The development would not only disrupt the skyline, but also potentially strain local services and changes of fabric and community by increasing traffic and altering the stability and safety of our environment, adding to the concern and economical impact of all residents as rising apartments, rents, lease, uh, drive up the, uh, overall cost of living, making our beloved neighborhood increasingly unaffordable. I was actually one of the first few that called 911 when the building got set on fire. I see all the traffic, the original plan, um, or the original building was actually a lot of people in the local community that she, the family said they planned on giving it to another medical building or office building of two stories. Apparently that didn't happen, as well as the yellow area is the full plot area and would not include parking, so that would be not considered. But thank you for considering my voice. Have a good day.
Does your daughter want to say anything?
My wife wanted her to say something.
She, she looked very excited. Correct. All right, come on up.
Also hello, I didn't realize we live so close to each other.
Yeah, we live really close.
Yeah, he's one of my friends from mechanical engineering. So, um, so my name is Arlo Hancock, we live in Essex Court. In addition to everything he said, I wanted to mention a couple of things presented earlier. The height limits based on the current zoning are not 75 feet, it's 45 feet per the current zone. It can go up to 75 based on the roof, but that's not what the zoning says. My biggest concern honestly has been since that place burned down. We mentioned to the other committee before that we don't have a lot of access already. We've had a lot of utility problems before. We had a massive, we had one of the main water mains break in our community last summer. Uh, we also, after the building burned down, had our power, we lost 240 volts and it went down to 120. Like Rocky Mountain Power didn't even know why. Um, but all of our lights worked, but we couldn't get our AC or oven to work and it was just like our front units. And so with all of that and then a giant building burned down, it's very concerning to just throw up this new building. In addition to it just, I mean, there's no way around it. These new buildings, they look like they're made out of wood. They really do. They're not, they're made out of oil. They're all component boards that have been impregnated with oil out of like chipboard and everything else and all these engineering woods. A lot of that stuff lights up very, very quickly in any fire suppression system that they have. A lot of it, thankfully, a lot of these smarter developers have sort of putting it in the attic too, because like in Essex Court, we had to put up a bunch of barriers because fire loves attics. It's just like kindling over a campfire, it just runs through trusses. But if you have a system where it's all these oil-impregnated engineered woods, if fire gets in the walls from them hiring a contractor that uses a torch to try and solder some copper pipe, that exact scenario, burned down one of these five over ones in 2000, it was, uh, the Avalon, Avalons at Edgewater, because they're always at somewhere. That was a five over one that got burned down twice, once in 2000 and again in 2015. Um, the local government there actually went after him and it's ongoing. So in addition to that being extremely flammable, also a lot of the exterior insulation that they use on these, it's called exterior insulation finishing system, so EIFS. So one of the residential change, or one of the changes that this allows them to do is for the previous zoning, they have to use traditional building methods like brick and things that are known to be fire retardant and work well. With the new one, they're allowed to use more engineering materials that just adds more plastic and vapor barriers. And if fire destroys things, water is just as bad and those vapor barriers can trap water in these five over ones and just turn them into paper mache. So engineering things to consider, so thank you guys.
Good evening, my name is Raymond Christine, I'm a resident of Essex Court. I'm not going to get into the technical aspects of the gentleman just before me, I'm just going to talk from my heart. Um, living at, in that residence, living in Essex Court for the number of years I've lived there, if you look at the road and you try to change what U dot has put in, you can see it's still there. Uh, the traffic is horrendous to get al- along Ninth East. Also, I would like to mention, uh, from my heart, where I live, a building that that's that high, it's going to reduce the amount of that sunset that we get in the evenings, which makes our residence that much special. I noticed earlier that you have a logo up and it says Midvale, it's in the middle of everything. Well, putting up a building that high takes away from the miracle and the, and the comfort and the warmth of our residents. And I know you deal with zoning, so you can't zone out those beautiful sunsets, but you can zone in that we preserve the life, the, the life, the comfort, the safety that we currently have at Essex Court, that cannot be exchanged for a building of that size. So I'd like you to take my considerations or make your considerations on the human aspect of where we live. It's beautiful, it's comfortable, it's safe. And that can't be changed for, or rezoned, or shouldn't be rezoned for a larger facility to add more traffic on Ninth South. You can't add streetlights on there, you can't do any of that stuff on there. It, it's been that way for the last nine years that I've lived there. So I deal with it. I come in a different way to get home, but it's home. And that's why a whole bunch of people are here to talk about preserving home, because we live in Midvale. We decided to live here. We didn't decide to live down in Sandy, we didn't decide to live up in Murray. We selected Essex Court for a reason. It doesn't have a lot of outside amenities. My kids always complain about, how come you don't have a swing pool dad? And that, hey, we have a court where we can just be at home. Because that's where, and I'm hoping that you take that into consideration on zoning. And maybe it's one of those things like the cart, you know, it's just priceless. How can you zone comfort, home, and, um, peace of mind, tranquility? You can't. But you can zone in, but hopefully you do not zone in a structure that takes away from that. Thank you very much.
Hi, um, my name is Megan Thering. Um, I'm a resident at Essex Court and I don't know much about the building code and, um, all the development, but I'm a teacher, so I know teenagers and that's what I'd like to speak to. Um, the teenagers and the families that live in that area. So if we, um, allow this to become residential, we're going to be packing in a lot more families and we are really close to Hillcrest High. I don't work at Hillcrest High, but again, I know teenagers, that's what I usually work with. Um, and if we put this residential area in such a walkable distance, it's going to be really scary for their safety. We've got teenagers that are just getting their driver's license, they're inexperienced. We already talked about the traffic in that area, teenagers don't know how to handle that. Just two weeks ago, I was driving to work and I turned on South Union and there was somebody laying in the road. I don't know if it was a, a kid or an adult, but, um, a pedestrian had just been hit and they were waiting for, um, paramedics to come and help them. And it was just another one of those fears that was observed. So please keep in mind that, like, we've got teenagers, they think they're invincible, they don't always pay attention, they're walking down the road with their phone out, they're not looking at the traffic and it's, it's a scary thing to think that we're going to pack that many more families into a, a busy high school on a busy road, trying to get them to walk through there too. And I'm just, I'm worried about their safety. Another thing, I'm going to speak from the heart again too. So my unit is right, um, on the west side, um, towards the north, so the shadow of this building would really impact my family. Um, we have a growing family, I have a son already and, um, we, we joke all the time that he doesn't need fancy toys, we just give him a stick and a pile of dirt and he loves it. Um, we just planted our garden and if we, I, I understand that we can't, um, stop the, the project necessarily from like the highest potential, but I think with the residential overlay, they're going to be looking at money and income and they're going to want to build to that highest potential and that would block all of our sun, so we would not get any garden sun. Um, and it would be really devastating. We plant flowers every year, my husband plants the vegetables, my son digs in the dirt, we're teaching him how to like grow his own food and, um, yeah, so that was another thing to consider. So the safety of our kids and our families and, um, just another beautiful thing about Essex Court. So, thank you.
Uh, my name is Gordon Cook. I am a 19-year resident of the Fair Meadows, uh, community complex on the west side of Ninth East. I won't repeat a lot of what you've heard already, but what I haven't heard is, uh, crime. And several years ago, uh, the 232 residents of Fair Meadows decided to gate our community. There was a lot of through traffic, people turning off of Ninth East to cut through our community to get to the west side of the valley. And I've been a pedestrian, I've been a bicyclist and I've been a, a driver and I've seen it all, uh, along Ninth East, but my biggest concern is crime. Uh, many people use the Nextdoor app to understand what's going on in the community and there are more break-ins in automobiles. My fear is the crime is originating on the west side near State Street and it's moving east. And if we add more, uh, residential property, more cars parking along Ninth East, there'll be more break-ins and there's a cost to adding more, uh, on the, uh, police force, uh, more fire people to address, uh, you know, fire issues as I mentioned earlier. So please consider the impact of crime on our communities and the fact that we gated the Fair Meadows community to prevent a, a growth in traffic through the community that did not belong there. I just see that growing if we put in a, a, a seven-story structure with possibly 200 additional residents. It's just more problems we're going to have to solve as Midvale continues to grow. Am I allowed to ask for a show of hands in this community as far as the people who are resistant to this new development?
You've got a minute?
I, I have no issue. If, if you're here and you feel against the, this new building, just raise your hand. Okay, now, now put your hands down. Now if you're in favor of it, please raise your hand. Okay, I think, I think I'm done.
Appreciate it. I know, I know that this stuff, I know that this isn't a Q and A generally, but I just want to say as someone that represents only people on the west side, please don't ever come here again and just sort of assume that crime comes from the west side. I mean, I understand that maybe not what you're trying to say, but you know, there is an east side, west side thing that happens in Midvale that we try to get rid of and coming up here and saying, hey, crime comes from the west side to our side is pretty insulting. And no, your time's up, your time's up. You're fine. Just going forward, understand that, I always understand the crime question, but there, if we want to make east and west Midvale singular, we can't think like that anymore. Midvale singular, we can't think like that anymore. Thank you, councilmember. Go ahead and just please say.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Toffer and I am the chairperson for the Fair Meadows Homeowners Association. We have, as Gordon just mentioned, we have gated our community and we have the privilege of having an exit off of Ninth East or off of Seventh East. But Essex Court doesn't have that privilege. They have to come out onto Ninth East no matter what and enter and exit. And the traffic pattern along there, as we've, as been mentioned, has been horrific. It used to be, I've been there for 30 years, I've been on the committee for 24 years and I've seen traffic grow and grow and grow in that timeframe. We have several other communities that are HOAs that also live in that area that are accessing onto the surrounding roads and it's causing a lot of congestion right at 7200 South. From Seventh to 11th East is really traffic bound. One of the things that I wanted to mention was, that hasn't been mentioned, is the infrastructure of the, of the area. Our water and sewer are, I think, in jeopardy if we allow 200 more units to be placed on this property. I don't know if Midvale City's taken that into consideration, but it's something that you better consider if, if we're going to have another fire like we did on that first building. And they came into our project to take water, the water from our fire hydrant. We honestly had a man in the, in the west part of our complex that couldn't even brush his teeth. He didn't have enough water pressure. So that's one thing that I'm really concerned about also with everything else that's been said. And one other thing before I leave is I don't think it's been considered either that 2,200 more units into this complex, into this area. You haven't considered Smiths and Harmon's are the only two grocery stores in the whole area and putting that many more families going and buying, shopping. Those stores have been overrun with a, with a new project on, on South Union Avenue. That, that complex is really stressed out. Harmon's and Smiths hours and people wise, they're having a hard time keeping employees. So I just wanted to bring those things to your attention. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. I just have to make a comment. This is, I know that you all have this specific fire impact that happened right there, but it's fascinating for me and all that I've learned of sitting on Unified Fire. Because all the time, the critiques of the fire business is that fires actually rarely happen these days. So it's fascinating to me to hear the perspective. I really appreciate it. It's just, it's different than a lot of the other conversations. Sorry, come on up.
Hello. My name is Sam Kingor. I am a resident at Essex Court. And I have submitted comments. I'll just go through these for the public's benefit. There were the three criteria that were talked about originally. So far, much has been discussed about the technicality of the criteria, what that means. There's been in favor and against presented, but I don't see any technical supporting documents supporting that. And not a recognition that this is adjacent to this landlocked housing property next to it that would create, in my opinion, negative burden on existing residents rather than enhancing the community. The project isn't provided, the proposed project is not providing significant commercial, which jeopardizes, in my opinion, its maintenance of the RC status. So I don't see a balance there with commercial and residential. This is almost purely residential. So it is dramatically changing the existing commercial area. Market studies were referenced. I haven't seen any publicly provided, no data, no information supporting, you know, potential for commercial or not. And then how much the potential residential will actually benefit the community. That's not necessarily been presented. A lack of that, a lack of that technical information doesn't really support this other than he should, she said yes or no, you know? So to me, it's neutral. It's not really an issue that can be supported if there isn't information, actual information to support it. No market study presented, therefore it doesn't exist. If we get into the technicality of the R C R O requirements, the first one talks about this rezone needing to be in a regional commercial shopping center. This has not been a shopping center. This whole section of 900 East from Fort Union to the north is all, you know, service oriented. There's not shopping. So there isn't any kind of extra surface parking around that would justify making this change because that surface parking would normally buffer this seven-story project. The high-quality urban environment is supposed to, you know, to create a high-quality consistent urban environment. That is challenged here because Essex Court is being impacted by, of course, we said traffic. Then we have lack of amenity space that would, could be shared by the community. It's exclusive to the one being built. There, no one's mentioned dog impacts, but if you owned a dog, you'd want to go to our neighborhood to walk the dog. Okay.
Your time, sorry.
Yeah, well, just in closing, I would challenge, okay. All right.
Sorry. I apologize, appreciate it.
That's as far as I got. Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jerry Gooding. I live in Fair Meadows. I just want to point out to you all, which I'm sure you know, there's an apartment building being built right down the street where RC Willie used to be. I think it's 100-plus units of apartments. Someone mentioned at the other meeting that North Union is 20% unoccupied. So I don't know if we really need another 200 units in the area. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
My name is David McBride. I am the property owner of 6947 South, 900 East. Gladly raise my hand in opposition. Just want to share a couple of items as it relates to the regional commercial overlay specifically. The municipal code states that it is to provide pedestrian connections within and among developments to support pedestrian activity in existing auto-oriented developments and to encourage pedestrian movement. We have been in our space, in our building, where we have our business for the better part of a decade as we made that acquisition. This development will do very little for pedestrian-related traffic. Also, it was already specified, the first provision and purpose of this regional commercial overlay is to provide critical mass necessary to help facilitate the transition of regional commercial shopping centers into vibrant mixed use. The common sense perspective for me, especially when Mr. Paul put up the proposal that they were expecting or if they were going to put in a office building that would take even more space that's there. We have had ongoing problems with parking. I don't see how from a standpoint of pure parking position, if that were to be the case, I would gently disagree with Mr. Paul. Look at what's happening in the office marketplace nationally. They're not interested in doing that. This is a, an opportunity for them to make as dense of housing project as possible to drive as much money as possible. And again, I think from the perspective of quality of life and quality of opportunities for those who are already residents, would strongly suggest and appreciate your done out of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mandy Byrd. I'm a resident of Fair Meadows, just west of the proposed area. And I speak for myself as well as multiple of my neighbors. We two were observing the, the issue of foot traffic safety that, for it to be a walkable community, there needs to be more, more easement for that walkability and the safety of those people walking needs to be taken into consideration. In which case, emergency responders with the traffic and the issues of more dense population there, emergency responders are going to have a difficult time getting through as well to these facilities with that, that amount of, you know, residents. With traffic congestion, there's air pollution as well, that it's going to affect the, the quality of the air in the area with longer idle times, idling times. And it'll, it's going to cause some health concerns for the people living there and/or the people that are already living in our communities. Parking issues, I can see it's obvious that that's, that's an issue. I, I'm curious with the zoning, why, why it's proposed the maximum size of, of a business, business space or the maximum size of a residential space? Could it not be, you know, taken down a notch and, you know, be reasonable and work with the community? I mean, that, I think if we were, if something like that were proposed, we could, we could talk, but this is, this is kind of ridiculous with the, the height of the building. There's so many people that it impacts that are already live here, that are established, good citizens, just trying to live their lives, want to grow a garden, they're going to be impacted. They have trees, they have, they have a lifestyle that they've established in these communities and it's going to really impact our lives. And I just would, wanted to express those opinions. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Julia Rivera. I live in Essex Court. So just towards the impactfulness, 200 units, I don't know how many bedrooms, let's say two bedrooms. That could be potential for four people per unit. That's 800 people in that area. The parking, I know that it's been beat to death, but is insanely important. When you go into our condominium, it is a very narrow one-way in, very narrow one-way out. You have to sometimes pull over to let somebody out. If there was that entrance into that, their community, it interferes with that little tiny entrance and exit way. When we had, so we bought the condo days before the building burned down, days before. Like we signed, we saw it on the news, we're like, oh crap, look, that's our complex. It was that, that other complex. So very scary trying to figure out what's going to be built there, going in and out of the complex, having guests over, having no parking. The parking in there is very minimal. I love it there, but it's very minimal. If you consider 800 potentially new people moving in right there, if there's an emergency, how are they going to get in and out of the complex? When they, when that water broke, you couldn't get, you couldn't go past it. You can't, there's just that one little entrance. And I, I think that it's, it's important to consider that many people. That's potentially 800 residents to that complex. That's a lot of people. So that's, I think that it's, it needs to be beat, beat more. You know, it's, it's an important one and it's an impactful one. Because if there is an emergency, what are you going to do? How are you going to get in and out? A fire truck goes in that entrance? Nobody's getting out. You know, how long is it going to sit there? So that's, that's my, that's my rant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emmy Cordano and I am a homeowner in Essex Court. I am absolutely against this R C R O overlay and for very specific reasons. The developer is indicating that the height level is the same as the current zone, commercial. He's also indicating that it's, his project or whatever the R C R O is less impact, is less impactful. If, if you actually read the code, you would know that the current zone allows three stories to five stories. This R C R O allows seven stories. There's no other area, there's no other building in Midvale. On the east side in Midvale, that is seven stories. They are five stories. That includes Union Park, that includes Union Heights or Liberty Heights. I know that, you know, that's right on the border, but still, this project is a monstrosity, basically a concrete monstrosity, a concrete block of seven stories. That is why you shouldn't allow this R C R O. So he's claiming that he's willing to be restricted. Great. Why didn't he apply for an RM12 or an RM25? Which is what Essex Court is right now. So that's multifamily residential. So why didn't he apply for that? Because then we probably wouldn't even be here. Right? We understand that this is going to be developed. The question is, what is it going to be developed with? The only other R C R O zones that I'm assuming you guys have approved or your predecessors are in the middle of a commercial zone. This is not in the middle of a commercial zone. It is surrounded on three sides by other than a commercial zone. On one side, it's multifamily residential. Right across the street are single-family residencials. It's only on one side that it has a commercial zone. So what kind of precedent are you setting by doing that? There's absolutely no need for this building, as big as it is, the size that an R C R O allows, and they're going to the max, right? They're not coming in here going, we would like an R C R O, but then they propose a three-story building. In that situation, we wouldn't be here either. It is the size, the height and the footprint.
Thank you.
That affects us. So I have two people that are here that are willing to yield me their time. So I was wondering if you would allow me to do that?
No, I apologize. That's, look, I've been doing this for two and a half years and we've never done that.
What, there's always a first?
I, I know there is, but I, I, I'm going to say no.
So we should stick to how things are, is what you're saying?
You can, you can use the argument however you want, but no, so we're going to.
I mean, that's allowed in, in any other public.
I, I understand. I, I'm going to ask that we continue to move on.
Sorry?
We'll, we'll continue to move on. We appreciate you speaking.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Mikel Hanny, a resident of Essex Court. And everyone is so good at public speaking, so wish me luck. I stand before you today not only as a concerned member of our diverse and unique community, but also as a relatively new resident who has been deeply touched by the character and spirit of our neighborhood. Though I have only lived here a couple of years, the sense of belonging and connection I have found here has touched my heart in such a profound way that I have no intention of ever leaving. As we gather to discuss the rezoning proposal that is currently on the table, I urge you to consider the impact that this decision will have on the families and residents who call this neighborhood home. My twin daughters, who have grown to love this community as much as I have, deserve to grow up in a safe and nurturing environment, free from the potential risks and disruptions that an increase in traffic and congestion would bring. Moreover, the proposed apartment building would cast shadows over our homes, potentially impacting our ability to grow healthy gardens on our patios and diminish our beautiful sunset views that we cherish. As someone who takes pride in cultivating a green and vibrant space for my family, I worry about the negative effects that reduced sunlight and increased shadowing would have on our ability to enjoy, enjoy our outdoor living spaces. But it's not just about the physical impacts of the proposed development. The older community in Essex Court who have lived here for decades would also feel the impact. impact of the rezoning. Instead of an apartment building which may not cater to their needs, I believe that the older residents would benefit from something more driven towards legacy community, such as a small-scale elderly care, a park, or something more small-community centered. I understand that legacy communities may not necessarily add monetary value for developers in the short term, however, I believe that appealing to the longevity and well-being of its neighbors could add a better value in the long run. By preserving the character and integrity of our neighborhood, we not only ensure the happiness and satisfaction of current residents, but we also create a more desirable and sustainable community for our future generations. We understand the need for growth and development, but it must be done thoughtfully and in harmony with the existing character of our neighborhood. The proposed apartment building with its potential for increased traffic, noise, and density simply does not align with our values and vision for our community. I urge you to listen to the voices of your constituents, the people who elected you, to represent their interests and concerns. We do not want an apartment building looming over our homes, casting shadows on our way of life. Instead, let us work together to preserve the character and integrity of our neighborhood and create a future that benefits all of our community members. I implore you to reject the rezoning proposal and to protect the interests of our diverse and unique community. Let us work together to ensure our neighborhood remains a place where families can thrive and come together.
Thank you, Mikel.
Thanks.
It turns out you didn't need luck, you did a great job.
Going once? Go ahead. I know you're part of the application, but since we are in this, you will get your three minutes.
This is okay, all right. I just wanted the opportunity to, my name is Ada Baghumiyan, my family owns the property. I really do, I know we're here to discuss zoning specifically, but I want to have a voice in letting the community know that we do care. This isn't an opportunity for our family, I think the implication was that we're doing this to, you know, for a financial gain, and I think there's no way that we went into this partnership with that dream. My father purchased this property, when he had a stroke in 2016, I was tasked with managing the property. Our tenants were friends, the community at Essex, I have friends in the community myself. We do care, this isn't something that we dreamed or hoped for. It matters that we have a partnership and the developer that we've chosen to work with, it was important for the family to find someone that we could trust to work with the community. That's been emphasized from the beginning of the conversation to the end. So, as our hope is that this becomes a partnership with the community where we listen to the needs and we make accommodations for each other. So, what we don't want, we've had proposals from retail outfits to build a car wash or multiple drive-throughs, and it was important for us to do what we thought the community might want. No one wants, you know, noisy car wash in front of their residential units. There are considerations that were made, and I just really want to emphasize that, that there's an understanding that those things are important to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Last chance. I don't know who that was, but I was brave. Going once, twice, three times.
Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing.
We have a motion in a second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion on that? Home in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, public comment is closed for that. We'll move into the action item, which is Consider Ordinance Number 2024-009, authorizing a zone map amendment to approximately 2.37 acres located at 7001 South, 900 East to add the regional commercial residential overlay zone. Open that up for discussion.
I just have a couple of thoughts. One thing that's hard of this discussion for me is, and I say this every time for every zone where this happens, is that, you know, it's great that you're all here. I love that everyone's here, I love public engagement, I try to get it all the time. Unfortunately, it's the first time I've seen a lot of you, and we've had other parts of the city where they've built something similar, right? And if I ask people on the west side about this, they think, "Oh, there's an entrance on 9th East, there's already a lot of density over there," we think it's fine, right? And when, you know, the project comes over by me, the people by me get upset, right? For the same reasons, right? And it's hard for me to understand what's best for Midvale, right? Is it what's best for the 17 or 20 homes, not just for your project, but just generally that's in the area, or is it best for Midvale to have something more? And I'm not saying that that's the case for here or not. What I would like to have happen is, hey, when you see these other, you know, hopefully you all now get the emails for City Council, you see them and you advocate for your neighbors that are more than just in your driveway, right? Because a lot of my neighbors are like, "Hey, Roosevelt," that's a road that I live by, "has turned into a one-way road," essentially because of one of these developments. Well, you guys have a private property, right? You'd have a lot easier time controlling if someone parked in your area than what we do, right? But no one from the east side came over and said, "Hey, don't build these townhomes that are going to make your lives hard." In fact, people on the east side, there were people that came and said, "Hey, that's not by us, it's by tracks or whatever, sounds like a good place for density." So, it's just a hard topic when, you know, we don't always have the same voice. So, all I'm suggesting is going forward, you know, keep an eye on all of them, come and have your voices heard, you know, not just on things you don't like, but on things you even like. Because the more I know, the more I can vote on something, right? Because, you know, if I only get these myopic views, it's hard to know. Does that make sense? That's all I have.
I guess, just a couple of things. Considering, I like the quote, "quality of life," I think that is important to consider, especially to citizens that live here. And the other thing is, is the height bothers me, it's just, it does not fit Midvale's. We do have some five stories, and that kind of seems to fit in some areas, but seven stories is stretching it, and for me, that's just too high.
But I think that we also, I mean, things are zoned the way they are for a very specific reason. And then I think when we look at variances, I think sometimes we as a council are a little more forgiving to them if we're presented with something that meets more of our objective. I don't see this meeting any of our objectives for the mixed use and the higher-density housing. So, I have a lot of concerns on that, especially where, as we've discussed at length, that once we do these waivers, then we have no way of holding them to what we're going to get in the end, you know? So, I have a lot of concerns.
Can we hold them to a development agreement? Having said that, we just learned that we can't.
So, this last legislative session, the law did change around development agreements, where previously there was problematic language. That language has been removed, and I suspect it's because of communities like ours that essentially just said, "We're not open for business."
Oh, because it's like, we're saying no then, if we have nothing.
Exactly. So, at least as of about six weeks ago, they passed it with a two-thirds majority in both houses, that meant it was veto-proof, that that wasn't to affect us law.
And thank you, you know, I didn't mean to cut you off. And I generally agree with what she said. For me to go above what sort of we think of as the already-approved height is, a lot more has to come back towards the general population, right? And that would be, for me, a lot more retail or something along those lines, but, you know, if you're going to ask the community to have, you know, something bigger than what's already there, they need something more in return, you know? And that's not just, unfortunately, not just residential everywhere, right? That's my personal opinion on it. I'm glad to know that that did pass. I was just going to add a no on development agreements. That's okay.
Yes.
So, because I don't know that everybody deals with city stuff all the time, one of the things that we find as a city that puts us in a really interesting position, just last week, and you'll find it in the paper, Governor Cox said that cities, he was giving cities an ultimatum, that we better start approving higher-density, smaller lots, or the state is going to take that authority away from us. So, just last week, he was quoted giving that, that he was giving cities a one-year ultimatum. And this is something that cities have been in this really contentious place with the state, where the state is saying, "Housing affordability is your fault, we're going to give you limited tools on how to address it." Really, the way we're going to give tools to cities is just to grow. And it's this balance that we've been in for a long time, and one of the ways we've worked through that is this development agreement, where again, we look at zones, and it's really hard, if it matches the zone, then it's there. The one way that we can kind of, we've been able to do this in the past, is that when somebody's coming to a rezone, if we have a development agreement in place, we can have more guarantees, "Hey, you did this thing, we like that." And so, it's the opportunity for the developer to work with the neighborhood, to work with our staff, to come up with an agreement that they're essentially, I'm trying to say something that was broader strokes, but is bound by, that can go a little beyond than what we see in normal zoning. Last year, the state came to cities and said, "That is slowing down development, we're going to make that, we're going to take away that tool from you." We had conversations here of, like, that's the main reason we've been willing to approve some larger projects, because we have more guarantees, both to the city and to those neighborhoods. When the state took that away, I think we saw a lot of cities across the state, like, you are just actually harming the thing that you want done, you're claiming that this is hurting the process, but taking away is actually just going to hurt it more. So, as you just heard now, apparently, we have the ability to do some more of that as a potential option in this scenario, but not something we had for the last year. Sorry, I have to give context apparently sometimes. Go ahead, councilmember.
Well, I was just going to say, I kind of wanted to echo what council member Robinson had said. As a council, you know, we have been kind of on the same page when it comes to what it looks like for development as we move forward, and that is that we're going, that we want to be very intentional and thoughtful about the kind of developments that we make. And I think in District One, where we have, I mean, I think we need to acknowledge that we have very little elbow room, so when we are looking at development opportunities, we really have to be very intentional about them. And one of the needs, I mean, housing is going to be a need in Salt Lake County in the next five, 10 years, that is a need, but the need isn't simply just housing, but it is also affordable housing, and that's not something that was part of this discussion. So, that's something that I think kind of almost negates that conversation there. But we have conversations about being very, you know, with a multi-use eye when we look at some of these developments, being true multi-use, being very focused on that, and I don't think that this meets that. And so, I do appreciate all of the comments about making sure we're being thoughtful about the decisions that we're making as we move forward with development projects, especially where we don't have a lot of space in our district to just throw up, you know, these kinds of developments without being thoughtful about what is that going to do also in the community? How is it going to benefit the community outside of providing housing, but what are those affordable options? What does that multi-use look like? And that kind of thing. And so, I don't think that this has met those kinds of concerns there.
Just adding my two cents, I would agree with what Councilmember Billings just said. One thing to note, I, you know, I think most of you realize that this is going to be redeveloped at some point. I don't think any of you want it to remain an empty lot that is just piles of dirt and weeds. So, I think the error, if there was one that was made, was just shooting too high for this particular rezone, and if it was a rezone for something a little bit more palatable or a little bit more in tune with the surrounding community and environs, then I think we'd be having a different discussion. There'd probably be about 95% less people here tonight. So, hopefully, the developer can take this feedback and perhaps come back with a different rezone request that goes just a little bit lower than seven stories. I would say there's room for seven-story buildings in Midvale, I might be one of the only up here, and Councilmember Billings is nodding as well, but it's certainly not in this location. You know, we have some room in Jordan Bluffs area where a seven-story building could probably go up there and not rankle too many people, but, you know, this seems to have a number of fatal flaws, so.
I have one last comment. As Councilmember Gettle just said, I think, I hope there's this recognition that this is, however, I have a feeling I know where people are at, but however this vote goes today, like, this is not the end of the process, and if this rezone doesn't pass, like, it's not the end. One of the challenges, again, because I don't know, I don't know what that will mean for this area, and we will explore that as all of you do, I'm sure, as well as that's all public. This also just came out a few days ago, I'm just looking at this, I don't know if you all are aware, that Utah Foundation, they do polling, policy work, they're an independent, really well-respected independent group in the state. They just did a poll, or, I don't know if it's a poll exactly, a survey, where the number two issues, most important issues to voters across Utah, housing affordability number one, number two, politicians listening to voters. And it is this tricky, tricky spot that we get into again, because I'm just saying, I don't know if a different project that comes forward, I don't know that you all will be on board, but we both have, and I think I disagree a lot with the state, but the state will come in and say, "Well, everybody wants housing affordability, let's fix that by having everybody grow everywhere." And then we have folks who say, "But you're not listening to us." And so, how we as a state figure that out, have we figured that out in this room, I don't know. Again, I just wanted, I looked at this the other day, thought it was really interesting, knowing we were about to have this conversation, and just thinking it's interesting context to just, again, I think some of the things that cities are really trying to work through, and hopefully you see, like, trying to do this in good faith efforts as well.
And I just want to piggyback on that, and one thing that is kind of hard to recognize now is, you know, within four years, all of us could be voted off, right? Like, all four, all five of us could be kicked off, and then you can get five people that think 10 stories belong there, right? And that's what's hard, you know, is I'm always trying to balance between, you know, how do we maintain, you know, a current look in Midvale with, you know, sort of getting projects in now that I think are good, that are long-term, right? Because, you know, how many acres is this property, right?
Two plus seven.
Seven, right? You're not going to get quarter-acre lots there, right?
Quarter-three.
You know, 20 years ago, everyone said, "Why don't you just put quarter-acre lot homes?" No one's going to do that, right? Even if we zoned to that, it would just stay a dirt field, right? And so, that's something I always think about, right? Like, how do we get to a project that is, it's not going to be a quarter-acre lot, right? But isn't 10 or 20 stories, right? Because you just don't know what the future holds. So, you get a good project that's substantial, it will probably stay there for 50 or so years, which is good and bad, right? Because if it's kind of crummy, well, it's there for 50 years, but at the same time, it could, you know, especially right there on 9th East, and let's say some developer buys, properties buy it, and they make an argument to a whole new set of councilmembers, it could go a lot different. You know, so that's what I'm always thinking about, right? Like, how do we, I would like to see a lot more of our ground, you know, developed now so we can control it in a way that looks towards the future, but isn't, you know, killing the neighborhoods.
I would entertain a motion if there's no further comments.
Before we move forward, I just again wanted to echo what Councilmember Brown said, and thank everybody for coming tonight. This means a lot, this is, you know, what we're here for, so for all of you to take your time out of your night, bring your kids and all of that, we really do appreciate it. And I hope that you guys also start following some of the city events we have, because that is a great way for you to get to know all of your city staff and also as councilmembers as well. And we do have a growing city, so it's really nice when we have the input that we can make the decisions based off of what you guys would like to see. So, I'll get off my horse now, but thank you.
The mural festival is June 8th.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we deny ordinance number 2024-009, authorizing a zone map amendment for approximately 2.37 acres located at 7001 South, 900 East, to add to the regional commercial residential overlay zone, with the findings that with the current proposal, approval would result in burdens that are not outweighed by the potential benefits of this zone change.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to deny.
So, I don't know if we've ever made a denial motion, we don't really like let it last or something. Do we vote yes if we agree with her? I just want to make sure we don't, like, accidentally pass something, or not, right? Like, thinking we, so, that was, yeah, you said that, I went, I don't know if I forgot that.
I know, it was interesting if you had a motion.
We will call roll, and if you want us to deny, you will say...
And we still vote, if we agree with her, we say yes.
And if we could also add some findings as well. So, unlike most of our staff reports, because it was a neutral recommendation, our staff report doesn't actually provide any findings to support the motion, if that makes sense. So, if you can just say, "We don't find that it meets the necessary qualifications for a rezone under..." whatever the, sorry, 17, 2, 3, 17, 3, 1? um, whatever the, sorry, 17, 2, 3, 17, 3, 1?
17, 7.
So, um, if you, if we can just modify the motion to say that there weren't findings sufficient, um, under 17, 3, 1.
18.3 dash 1 requires the.
18, 3, 1, 17. We're just doing, for those, if anybody's online listening, just doing some checking to make sure that we state the right.
Yes, the 17.
It's 17, 3, 1.
Yeah, it's the 17.
17, 3, 1.
So amend this?
Yeah.
I move that we deny ordinance number 2024 dash O dash 09, authorizing a zone map amendment for approximately 2.37 acres located at 7001 South, 900 East, uh, to add to the regional commercial residential overlay zone, uh, with the findings that it doesn't meet, uh, the qualifications for MMC 17, 3, 1.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Rory, if you will call roll, please.
Councilmember Billings?
Yes.
Glover?
Hi.
Robinson?
Hi.
Brown?
Yes.
And Gettle?
Yes.
Okay, that passes to deny the request.
That might be the first round of applause we've ever received.
That's, that's the agenda pertaining to that item. We've got more on the agenda, you are welcome to stay. You can also leave. I would just ask if you do leave, please go outside so we can continue to conduct business here. Thank you. All right, moving on to our next public hearing. Midvale City initiated rezone request to remove the 7200 South overlay from the northeast and southeast corners of State Street and Fort Union Boulevard. Soon as we can, we'll hear from Elizabeth.
Mayor, might we take a break now?
Yeah, we'll take a, we're going to take a two-minute recess.
Take two minutes?
Yeah. Doing okay. I don't know, I got another, I got three and a half more years, so probably that's, probably that'll be it, who knows? Crazy stuff. Which one is it? Oh, discussion. Right here. Five and three.
Yeah.
You have a street in the town that is, is, is a small driveway.
Yeah, I feel right. That was a mess. Yeah.
Oh, that's mad. One time before.
That's one of the other things. I've got, like, you know. It's true. Hey, well.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's work together.
Oh, I was thinking of that. See, what we can do, I know you.
The guy should be friendly, right? Like, you can't pass a truck to say, hey, you need to increase your traffic. So he's good.
For that, for private or for public? But if he wants to stay private, then I can keep. So depends on what he says there as to what he has.
That's what I remember from the planning. Because it sounds like he would be.
Ten second.
Would be depending.
Very eloquent. You did a good job.
Thank you.
Any idea about Juan? You're next.
My three-minute time lapse.
No, we need to make sure we're recording, so we need IT.
Bathroom, bathroom.
Okay.
Sorry.
Are we recording, Rory?
I'm not sure.
Uh, yeah. If we are, then everybody's going to know that Juan ran to the restroom, so we're just waiting on, on him to get back. And so we.
Let's see, if only any of our phones had YouTube on.
We are recording. We, we are recording.
We're good.
Well, there you go.
So we're good, we can get started.
Okay.
Apologize for anybody online having to hear all of this madness as we took a recess.
Are we waiting for Councilmember Billings?
Yay.
Okay.
One, two, three, four.
We got four.
Appreciate everybody's patience. We're not normally this crazy, sometimes we're worse than this.
Will you keep that open?
We kicked her out.
All right, duh, off the council. With the two walking in, Elizabeth Lawrence, sorry.
Okay, thank you. So this is for another city-initiated rezone request. Um, this is for 7200 South and Fort Union Boulevard area. So this is the proposed area. And the suggestion is to remove the 7200 South overlay that is currently applied to this set of properties. The underlying zone is the State Street commercial. Um, and like Vendeline pointed, we have our typical rezone criteria. This, we think satisfies number two, which we almost never see, which is that the zoning was probably the result of a clerical error of, or some kind of mistake, because the 7200 South overlay zone was created to supplement our mixed-use zone. And there is no mixed-use zoning in this area, so it really doesn't serve any purpose. This was brought to our attention as part of the State Street corridor study that was conducted in, and wrapped up in late 2022. So, yes, that is the proposal, is just to remove. We have fielded a fair number of calls from property owners and general people in the area on it. No, um, opposition, just questions about what it would do. Again, it doesn't change the underlying zone, we're just removing an overlay that's applied and serves no purpose in this area, so.
Which I think is fine, it just seems already all built out, right?
Yes.
So is there, is there a reason? Like, is there a secondary reason? Has someone asked for something or we just like, this doesn't make sense to be there?
No, it doesn't make sense. And if for any reason it was applied, maybe by mistake on it, on our part or any reason, or maybe if a developer came in and was trying to get it, it really further restricts the State Street commercial zone. So we didn't, we didn't see it helping in any way to fulfill State Street corridor, um, vision for that area.
Thank you.
So if we take it off, what is the difference then? I mean.
Truly no difference. We will just be doing some housekeeping cleanup is really what it boils down to.
It won't change heights, it won't change what type of, anything that can go in there, whether it be apartments or anything else?
Everything that's allowed by the State Street commercial zone will still be allowed. It, it won't change anything.
So what does the overlay actually do then for this? Anything at all?
No, nothing.
It, the intent was, did you say the intent was to try to bring in mixed-use into that area?
The, the zone itself was created and in its purpose talks about how it supplements the mixed-use zone. So where the mixed-use zone has been applied, it can give greater allowances and again.
Such as?
Wow, now this is pop quiz time. Uh, I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Why we're doing this if it's.
Really just for housekeeping, really just that. It, it sits in this area, it doesn't, it doesn't serve any purpose. I think it just further bogs down the system and provides more complication for us as staff as to what to apply where and, and what regulates.
Which I appreciate, but what I just don't get is, it seems so built out. Like, how, how had, has anyone in the last 10 years come in and asked for, like, you know what I mean? Like, it just seems like it's just city, it's, it's like a Walgreens and a T-Mobile and, and a strip mall. Like, there's been no change for, you know, 15 years, so it's, like, I don't know what system we're bogging down, I guess is my point, right?
Yeah, no, I, I think that's a really fair point. I don't, I don't know that there is, it was just a recommendation from, from the study that was conducted as like an easy house, housekeeping item that we could clean up and remove.
Does it change any setbacks, any heights, anything?
No.
So.
No, I don't know how many times I could say that, it really doesn't do anything.
It just seems so weird, you know, like, so be clear.
This overlay should only exist on mixed-use zone. That did not happen here. So when, uh, Elizabeth is saying that this is truly a clerical error, this is a truly a clerical error. Someone extended this overlay to a place that it legally can't be. And so to clear up any confusion with the property owners as well as any future staff of trying to figure out how do we blend these things? We're just, planning staff is recommending removing the overlay so that there's absolutely no confusion. The zone.
Chief, can you shut that? For those online, we just had a comment from the audience, they were having a hard time hearing, we're just trying to make sure we're set up.
So, so like I was saying, this overlay should, should not have been here in the first place because it doesn't have the necessary underlying zone. Kind of think about it like our duplex overlay. It is only permissible in a single-family, one residential zone. It can't be applied to mixed-use, it can't be applied to regional commercial, it can't be applied to State Street commercial, it can't be applied to SF2 zones.
So it'd be like putting it over one of those, is what you're saying, the duplex?
What I'm saying is, it can exist in any zone but that. And this, this overlay can exist in any zone other than mixed-use. For whatever reason, someone made a mistake at some place, the overlay was put here. And now to, to clarify for everyone what the actual zone is, we're recommending that it be removed. So that way, everyone knows exactly what, what rules we're playing by, rather than trying to figure out how these intermingle, because they don't.
Right, that makes sense to me.
Thank you, I'm glad.
Mayor, I move that we open a public hearing.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, we will open up public comment on this item. If anybody would like to give comment on this, come on up. State your name for the record, you'll be given three minutes.
I'm Dave Murup and I own property just north of the overlay there on 7100 South and State. Uh, I've been involved in Midvale City for many years, built many floats for the city. I'm a fan of Midvale City. Uh, and this proposal is a Midvale City proposal, the planning committee. I was here as a planning committee a week ago or a couple of weeks ago. This proposal is from the city. And you're pretty vague about housecleaning because we get a letter that, that stipulates what wants to happen. And then when it was brought up during that planning meeting, that one, that's not supposed to be in there. That's not supposed to be in there, you know? And I think besides that, there is a bigger issue in that area. And it's called drugs, prostitution, and homeless people. And until those three things are addressed properly, then I don't think what your proposal is for the overlay and stuff, you know, you have to address that. You can't look me in the eye, not one of you, and tell me that there's not a problem with drugs, prostitution, and. Well, the other thing that I mentioned, it is a problem. 7200 South has got the reputation as second south of Salt Lake County. It, it's a fact. You guys can push it under the rug, you can do whatever you want to, you can make your overlays, you can do whatever. But it's something that needs to be addressed. And I, and this stuff got shoved down your throats by Salt Lake City. I got a suggestion for you. Put those homeless people, those drug users, put them back in Pioneer Park and see what happens. You'll get some attention. But until something happens there, I mean, it's smoke and mirrors. You're talking about open area up there and stuff. I don't know if you guys have read the proposal, but I know how this is going to turn out because this is a proposal by the city, so that's all I have to say, thanks.
Thank you. Any other pro comments?
May I move that we close the public comment?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close public comment. All in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, public comment is closed, any further discussion on that?
May I move that we approve ordinance twenty-twenty-four oh-ten, removing the seventy-two-hundred South overlay from the northeast and southeast corners of State Street and Fort Union Boulevard as provided in the attachments with the findings noted in the staff report?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Rory, would you call roll, please?
Yes, councilmember Glover.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Brown.
Yes.
Gettle.
Yes.
And Billings.
Yes.
Passes, thank you. Uh, I'll just quickly say, if at any point you wanna have a conversation about crime going on in your area, more than happy to, uh, we are addressing it from a lot of different ways, with our police chief, with actually zoning, zoning does play significant role in how we address crime, so um, I'm more than happy to make sure that, um, if, if that's a conversation you'd like to have and be able to, to know, just because we know it is a challenge, and, and let you know of all the ways we are working to address it.
Well, the, the problems that I, that are bothering my kind of care.
I, I understand, I'm sure, and I don't mean to start a forum, because, you know, that, that creates other issues, I just wanted to offer that to you, just so you know, okay? Thank you. All right, uh, going on to the, I make sure I'm in the right place here. Item C, the third public hearing, Midvale City initiated request to amend it, amend the section seventeen-seven-seven-one, seventeen-seven-seven-four, seventeen-seven-seven-five, and seventeen-seven-seven-eight of the State Street zone of the Midvale City Municipal Code. Elizabeth.
Okay, so the State Street corridor study that I mentioned very briefly in the last item, this was another recommendation that came out of that study to basically enhance the pedestrian scale and orientation of State Street. So we're proposing a number of changes, some of which are detailed here on the screen for you, that basically, um, improve things like adding outdoor dining as an allowed use, um, addressing surface parking lots that are in, you know, visible from adjacent streets, not allowing those buildings that have really long facades of more than fifty feet, breaking those up with different articulations, um, changing the front yard setback to allow for some more activation of the space, outdoor dining, gathering, shopping, things of the like. So, these are some proposed amendments, um, happy to answer any questions if you have about them.
Clarifying questions for Elizabeth.
The only, the only thing I disagree with is that, I mean, we, most of our parking in most of our businesses is out front. Now you're trying to move it to the back, so that if I wanna, if I wanna take my business and I want to have more parking in front, which I need, I'm not gonna be able to do that. And I, I, I want exactly the opposite, I want the opposite, the opportunity to be able to provide a plan and say, hey, this is what I need, and will it work for the city? Not just to force everybody to put their, their front right out on the State Street. It's always been a problem, and it, it, it just means I can't, I, I'll have to relocate. I won't be able to build what I wanna build there.
Yeah, I mean, that is really long-term visioning for the city. I, obviously, like we talked about earlier, it's not like we're getting loads of new development or redevelopment in the State Street area, but it is something to look at moving forward, but yeah, it does impact that.
It's not deep enough lots that you can put parking behind you, because it just doesn't work. It's not, it's not something that'll, that'll work for most of the businesses that are there. So we're either gonna have to sell our properties and do something different with them, instead of trying to rebuild and make it a better place.
Is there a way to Paul's point to grandfather in the existing businesses so that they, um, would have, uh, the ability to maintain the parking as is?
Yeah, we, we, we're not gonna force anyone to change anything unless they're doing some kind of expansion, or, you know.
It's just like my, the State Street has got wider and wider and wider and wider. So now my front, I have no parking, I, I can park three cars, that's it. And what I wanna do is move the building back, put parking out in front, so that I can do it. But I don't have enough room to be able to put parking out back, it just won't work.
But isn't, isn't the lot the same size?
The lot's the same size, but it just, if you, if I have to have a driveway, go all the way to the back of my property and put parking in the back, it just won't work. It's just like, it's so, it's, it's like, okay, I'll just have to move and go somewhere else, if I really wanna. Either that, or I'll keep the buildings that I've got and just keep refurbishing them the best I can.
And what's hard is, at least, you know, if you commute downstate, at least from Midvale to Salt Lake, right? The areas of State Street that people like, the buildings are on State Street. And the areas of State Street that people don't like are the ones with the, with the sea of parking in front of them, right? Like, you, you can see, you can drive down the State Street and see what, what areas are active and engaged, where there's, there's a lot on State Street, you know, along, you know, especially Murray, where there's a ton of strip malls that are just empty now, right? That, that, they're just dead, you know? So, granted, those are a lot deeper lots than ours.
That's the problem, if they have deep lots, then you, you can, you can do that.
I'm just saying, it's just, it's clear that, that, that makes a big difference. I think part of the problem is, is because they made State Street, the, you know, the size of, you know, I-fifteen in width, so that if you add a, you know, a deep parking, you know, you can have, on both sides, you can have like a half mile of concrete, right, between the two buildings. Uh, you know, it is unique with Midvale, because there are, especially even further south, you go right on the edge. I mean, some of those lots are, are, you know, there's a canal behind it or whatever.
It just makes it so that the businesses are there, are penalized, and they can't really do what they wanna do.
This is a public hearing, so.
May I move that we open a public hearing and allow pub, public comment?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to open the public comment on this item, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye. Thank you, any opposed? All right, we'll open up the public comment, if we have any public comments on this item. If we do, set forth your microphone, state your name for the record.
May I move that we close public comment?
We have a.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the public comment, all in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, public comment is closed, uh, this is an action item, uh, which is consider ordinance number twenty-twenty-four oh-eleven, amending section seventeen-seven-seven-one, seventeen-seven-seven-four, seventeen-seven-seven-five, and seventeen-seven-seven-eight relating to the purpose, law, and development standards, architectural standards, and parking in the State Street commercial zone of the Midvale City Municipal Code.
Just a clarifying question, um, I think Elizabeth answered affirmatively, so this wouldn't have any impact on existing businesses now, unless they were to submit a plan of expansion or any sort of modification, okay? Because I do, you know, I, I defer to councilmember Glover on this, I mean, he's personally impacted and, and has decades of experience on, on that street, so I don't wanna seem like we're not taking his concerns into, uh, play, because they're certainly valuable to this discussion.
It just, it basically means that I will keep my same footprint, I'll have three parking spots out in front of my business, and I will unload semi-trucks on the sidewalks, because that's the only place I can.
Don't let the police chief hear that. Did you hear what he said?
I, I mean, that is a unique, a unique business, right, for State. I guess the one across from you would also be the Jordan, uh, what's the other one, Garden? Which you're not, you're, you're, which you're not related to, right, but.
Jordan Moore, which is this gentleman right here that just spoke.
But you're, you're not the same.
What I'm saying is, it, it forces me to stay where I'm at, exact footprint, and I'm not gonna be able to remodel, I'm not gonna be able to expand, or do any of those things that I would like to do eventually. And so, and I'm sure there's other businesses all the way down the line. I, I think that we, I personally think we need to, if you wanna pass this, but we ought to have some, if you're grandfathered in, if, if I can come up with a good solution to the problem, I think that those that are in now ought to be able to come up with a way that will work for both Midvale and them.
And, and we can always do that with like, uh, variance, right?
Pretty hard to get a variance.
The, the variance standard is quite hard.
Oh.
It is, it's essentially, Garrett Law is so unique and your circumstances are so unique that you really can't develop and meet the standards unless something gives. So it's mainly for lots that are unique sizes or, uh, shapes or things like that that don't meet setback requirements, um, and with all economic benefit. But for someone who has a use.
They are probably not gonna receive a variance. So it's not something you can use just as a discretionary sort of, no, method?
I was just asking Garrett for clarification, because I, I was curious if, if the council was interested, if we could pull out that piece to continue talking about it. We cannot, we either need to pass, deny, or we can table, but.
I don't think we should have tabled it, it's just like how we can address that, because I definitely think this is key for activating State Street. But I also don't want our business owners to be hurt by what we're doing here.
I mean.
But I think this could help us activate some parts of State Street that is, is very viable.
I mean, we, we bend over backwards, we have for years, of all of the people down in Jordan Bluffs and all of these areas, uh, Riverwalk and all of that, to, they come in and they ask for an application, and we bend over backwards trying to help them develop so that we can get what we want down there. That, we do it all the time. And I, I can't see why we can't in some way do that with the businesses we have if we can, if it can be a win-win for both Midvale and the businesses. And again, I don't, I, I personally think we ought to table it and then see if there's any way we can work around it.
Do we know, just as a question, I know maybe staff would, it'd be weird with uniformity, but could we do something based on lot size? If your size was under a certain amount, then you had, those standards impacted you differently?
Can be done.
Yeah, I know, it, it, having it implemented, but, just curious, okay.
One thought I had was just, um, could we, um, make this not applicable to, um, business owners who own the business? So if someone comes in to, um, expand or whatever, and they are the original business owner, we would have record of that in the city, right?
Or business owner at time, and this order gets passed.
So, let's just use councilmember Glover, so as long as he's the owner of.
Eight-eight-ninety-three.
As long as he's the owner of that facility, then, you know, unless he sells to someone else, um, then, you know, that, when he sells it to someone else, then they are held to these new standards. And the original business owner, up until the point they sell their business or not.
And, and, and then he'd be held, he could be, if he wanted to build, the zoning would be what it currently is? Is that allowed, is that legal?
Well, the problem is, currently, it still, even currently, right now, you have to build right out on State Street. I don't, I, I don't know how much this changes, probably the setback is all, but it is that way. I've looked at it before, and it's like, it just doesn't work for me.
Can I ask Elizabeth again, um, how critical to the goals of this particular, um, ordinance i- is the parking piece? Is it, it's like essential?
Pretty important, yeah, yeah. I mean, the whole, the whole point of it and the study was to really activate State Street itself, so bringing the buildings closer, you'll see we, you know, shorten the setback to bring buildings even closer, only allowing for greater setback if they were going to add an activation of some kind to that area. So, yes, I would say it's very critical.
So it's not something, it would fundamentally change the whole thing if we would carve out that exception for parking?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and councilmember Glover said he already can't do what he wants to. Is that because his property is unique, or is that everyone already?
Um, I'm not familiar enough.
That's everyone already, the way the zone is already written, I mean, this just provides more flexibility. So, if a development came in and they're like, well, we'd actually like to be closer to State Street, right now, we have to say, well, no, you can't be, you actually have to be farther away. So this pushes them closer to the street. Um, the parking restriction is already there, so it, it, it doesn't change that much. It, it really increases flexibility of what you can do.
So, let's change my thoughts on this, because I thought of tabling it first too, but if it doesn't impact, i- if, if there's a net negative or net zero with something like our current people, what we should do is maybe consider passing it and then look into, you know, what could it look like for? Because it sounds like you need something different anyways, right?
Yeah, it's, I, and that's why I bring it up, just because it's not just for me, it's for, there are businesses all the way along there. And what it's gonna mount to is they're gonna have to sell if they wanna improve their properties. I, I mean, if we, if the businesses are there and we want them to improve their properties, but we're not allowing them to because they can't make it work, that's what I'm saying.
And, and we, and by no means I want to think anybody should leave. I bought a, a lawnmower from councilmember Glover, and I've purchased a snowblower from this, uh, this couple here at the, uh, the other one, so they're great for Midvale. But, you know, so keeping them here is, is, is important, but I don't know if this changes, this, it sounds like it won't change Glover, either way, we would need to think of other ways for the Jordan groups to stay, right? And we could talk about that. I, I don't know how to table that and make that work, right? If this would help future development now, I think it makes sense to go for it and, and then figure out how we can help out current ones, that's my, does that make sense what I'm saying? That makes sense to me. I- if, if it all of a sudden halted something that you had, that you could have done, then I would have felt different. I would've said, let's table this and, and, and think about it, but if it doesn't now, I think the direction we could tell the staff is how to, is there a way to make that work? You know, for at least what councilmember, uh, Gettle said, Gettle said, um.
That is not how that's pronounced for the record.
You know, current existing, to, you know, make a bigger, better thing.
Any other discussion, questions, otherwise I would entertain a motion.
Well, that's a different question.
Even though I sit next to him, I move that we approve ordinance twenty-twenty-four oh-eleven, amending section seventeen-seven-seven dot one, seventeen-seven-seven dot four, seventeen-seven-seven dot five, and seventeen-seven-seven dot eight of the State Street zone of the Midvale City Municipal Code as provided in the attachments with the finding noted in the staff report.
Here we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Rory, would you call roll, please?
Yes, that's councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Brown.
Yes.
Gettle.
Yes.
Billings?
Yes.
Glover?
No. Okay, four to one, that does pass, uh, we'll move into.
Mayor, I just wanna just reiterate, I, you know, it's, how do we, I don't wanna be the only person saying, staff, let's look into this, right? Do we need to have other people say that? Does that make sense, like, Matt, is that sufficient, do you think? I'm, I'm sure councilmember Glover agrees with me, so there's at least two people? I, I don't even know if it's possible, right? Just, let's think of a creative way around it, if we can. I don't want to think we gave up on him, you know? Throw goals.
Uh, we hear that there are two people who are saying that we need to look into that particular issue, and, uh, I'll work with Nate and Adam in order to come up with a process for us to be able to address that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item D, another public hearing, Midvale City initiated amendment that creates chapter seventeen-six supplementary regulations within the Midvale Municipal Code adopting the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District Water Efficiency Standards. Vendeline.
I'm here again. So this amendment is city-initiated, and there are two reasons for this. First, maybe the reason that's not quite as apparent, um, there are many um, features of zoning that are common to different zones, to really to all zones. If you think about landscaping. Um, features of zoning that are common to different zones, to really to all zones. If you think about landscaping. Every zone in our code has some type of a landscaping provision. And, uh, right now our code is set up in a way where these provisions are always repeated. So you have twenty spots in the, in in the municipal code that talk about landscaping as an example. Um. It it makes it very hard to maintain the code. Um, when it's set up that way and you can see that sometimes we have discrepancies in the language. Because over time, there may have been some amendments, um, where it was missed. To change a certain section. Um, this new chapter in the code is supposed to hold those elements that are common to all zones. And you'll see more, um, sections being added to this in the future. Of course, you have to prove some. Um, in this case, the section that, um, we're coming with is about water conservation. And, um, that actually has been driven by citizens who have asked us. Um, how come Midvale does not participate in the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District? Programs. Um, and I I believe this may have been discussed, um, several years ago. And the feeling was at that time, we don't really want to participate. Um, but there has been a lot of lobbying in that sense. Um, also, if you look at the water conservation requirements. That the water district has, that they want all the cities to approve. Um, they, you know, they turn maybe common practice in a different direction. There is definitely a thrust in there. To, um, minimize turf, uh, in lieu of other. Uh, landscaping approaches to save water, but it's it's also not on a scale. Where, uh, where we believe most people would say this is really just way too far. Um, something else you need, I think you could keep in mind is that. The city's hands are tied somewhat with enforcing, uh, landscaping. We used to be able to hold a bond for landscaping requirements, even with single family homes. But the state legislature changed that and we can't do that anymore. Um, so what that means really is, um, the citizens in Midvale who would like to participate. In the water conservation programs and get a rebate, um, for putting turf in, um, for taking turf out. Um, of the landscaping can't get the rebate. Um, so that's why this is, um, before you. I I added, um, to my presentation here, which cities have already approved this. And it's quite a few. I I circled the ones who are in Salt Lake County and it's. It's pretty much everyone. Except for us. Um, so that's just the first side note. Of course, that doesn't mean if, you know, if you don't believe that this is a good idea. Then of course, you know, peer pressure doesn't mean one should do things. Um, so anyway, that's, um, that's why this is, um, before you, um. As a staff recommendation, I put in here to recommend approval. Um, it seems the right thing to do, especially with, um, the recent drought we've had. Fortunately, the water situation is a little better, but that can always, you know, turn the other direction again.
And this will allow people to participate in the rebate programs, which we can, already can. But it's just easier for us.
Double the amount, I think.
Yes, yeah, yeah. And and I already, uh, got a call, phone call from the Water Conservancy District after this item went to the planning commission. Asking, does that mean it's approved? I said, no, not yet.
I also got that phone call.
Oh, you did? Okay.
How does it change the the building? It's going to go forward. Does that change? Um, they can do what they can do.
Um, basically, this just builds on the landscaping requirements we have. Um. There there are certain provisions in there. If you look through the document, it's in some ways, sometimes. Hard to read. Sometimes there may be some contradictions in there, but, um, the the main idea is. That, um, instead of having everything in turf on a, for example, on a residential lawn. To add mulch in some areas, um, to have areas that are. Um, set up for certain purpose, let's say you have a sitting area in your yard. Um, you know, you could put the table on mulch or on pavers or something. In order to displace some of the turf. Um, there's also one specific standard that doesn't, um, really apply very much to us. But some cities have very wide park strips. Um, and, uh. This, uh, document basically says, um, when you have a very wide park strip. You can put turf in it, but if it's narrower, um, turf is discouraged. Um, because you have a lot higher water consumption in that type of an arrangement and. It seems you already see that a lot anyway, that people will put rocks in their park strip, for example, just for ease of maintenance.
I've noticed that Salt Lake City is not on this list, which.
Um, actually it is. I may have forgotten to, it's it's right on the bottom there.
Oh, yeah, it's here, but not in the.
Yeah, in the staff report, I I I did a double take. What I had found for the staff report wasn't the most recent document. So.
Cause I was gonna try to figure out why the biggest city in the county would, but, cool.
Just a last reminder on this, that this came up last fall as we were having this conversation. Um, specifically, I mean, this is something that had been talked about in the city a little bit. There was, uh, some news media talking about the cities who. Didn't sign up and and we were on there. We're, oh, yeah, we should, we should do that. Um, from my understanding, it's mostly on new development that the requirements are on and then it allows for any of our residents trying to. Uh, do anything with their lawns that are water-saving, you can get double the rebate compared to what you could before. So it provides more money into the pockets of our residents and and doesn't put any, um, responsibility on. Or not most responsibility on on current existing.
Right, yeah, it's, you you could say, getting back to the idea of grandfathering and everything is grandfathered in as it is.
All right, this is also a public hearing.
Mayor, I move that we open public comment.
Second.
Thank you. You have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we'll move into the public comment.
Boy, she's been waiting patiently.
No, I didn't know this was going to be about tonight, so, and I'm very new to this.
Well, just please state your name.
Oh, yeah, Jaylene Morris. Um, I have, so it's a catch twenty-two for me. Because I'm all about con- conserving water and resources. I think it's very important. However, I'm on an acre of property and so I don't have all grass. I have. You know, sidewalks and whatever, um, but I like to grow my vegetables and I have an orchard. And so how do we justify penalizing individuals that water their crop? Right? And so I feel like it's such a, a catch twenty-two and I wanted to at least speak to it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
It's a great point and I think that's a very rare, um, piece of property in Midvale, so that might. Um, Vandalin, do you have any? Comment to that?
There's actually a carve-out in the, um, requirements, um, for that type of use. It's it's really the thrust is really towards turf.
I was gonna say, it, there's also, we we've moved towards the tiered water system, so really. Decisions, if we have really high water users, we already, we implemented a system several years ago to start addressing that piece. Okay, any other public comments?
Mayor, I move that we close public comment.
Second.
Motion second to close, close the public comment. All in favor, say aye.
Yes, aye.
Yes.
All right, public comment is closed. Uh, we do have an action item on this. Consider ordinance number twenty twenty four oh twelve, creating chapter seventeen dash six supplementary regulations within the Midvale. Municipal Code adopting the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District Water Efficiency Standards.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Rory, would you call roll please?
Yes, Councilmember Brian, uh, Brown, sorry.
Got real form, already informal, yes.
I was gonna say Jettle.
Yes.
Sorry, I just had to. Billings.
Yes.
Glover.
Aye.
And Robinson.
Aye.
That passes, thank you. All right, last public hearing of the night, but we still do have one more. Public hearing to receive public comment regarding the fiscal year twenty twenty five tentative budget for Midvale City beginning July first twenty twenty four and ending June thirtieth twenty twenty five. Ryan, it's only nine thirty.
And it's been a while. I've been up here for a few months, so. What? Are you getting my presentation? I added it during the workshop. Sorry. It was ready before then, I just forgot. Okay. Okay, we're gonna go over our fiscal year twenty twenty five tentative budget, uh, just to review of what our budget timeline looks like. We had a budget and strategy workshop on March twenty eighth of this year. Um, tonight you'll adopt our tentative budget that's required by state code. We'll have a public. And we'll have a public hearing and then we will have a public hearing on the tentatively adopted budget, which feels like again on May twenty first. Uh, and then on June eighteenth, uh, either you will, uh, adopt the certified tax rate and we'll adopt a final budget or we'll move into the truth and taxation process. Um, so just an overview of the tentative budget, uh, it is the city's estimated revenues and expenditures. Dang it, I thought I caught every date, um, from July first twenty twenty four to June thirtieth twenty twenty five. Uh, a budget is presented for each fund and all departments fall within a fund. And the tentative budget has been prepared by the finance department and city manager and is officially presented by the city's budget officer, which is Matt. I just get to do the talking, um, and reflects an effort to maintain the city's current level of ser- service in these uncertain economic times. And the tentative budget is the first draft of the budget. Um, so for the general fund, we have total revenues and expenditures of thirty million, three hundred and four thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars. This is a nineteen percent increase and that seems like a lot, but we do have, uh, a one-time, uh, transfer for the public works facility. That's, uh, adding to the increase a lot as well as UPD. So to cover that really five million dollar increase, we have projected new ongoing funds of one point eight million. And a proposed use of fund balance, which is our one-time funds of three point two million. Um, for our revenues, we have nineteen point one in taxes for the general fund, our license and licenses and permits. Is projected at seven hundred and thirty thousand. That's in red because that's a decrease from last year. Um, I've altered that to reflect actuals in the data that we have, um, to better reflect the revenue I think we'll we'll collect. Our intergovernmental revenue is three point eight eight million, charges for services, two point three five million. Fines and forfeitures similar to license and permits I've decreased to reflect actual data, uh, eight hundred and fifteen thousand. Our miscellaneous revenue, which is essentially interest, is a hundred and seventy-three thousand and our use of fund balance again is three point two million. Um, just a breakdown of our tax revenues, this is the biggest part of our general fund revenue. Um, we have our sales tax at eleven point four million. This is a one point, a one percent increase from our fiscal year twenty-three actuals. We were a little, um, reserved in what we projected for this fiscal year, so going off the actuals gives us a better. The twenty-three actuals gives us a better, uh, idea of what we'll have this year. Our property taxes, uh, are at four point one million. This includes one percent of new growth, which is thirty-one thousand, and then a proposed thirty-two percent property tax increase. We're gonna go into that. A little further here, which generates nine hundred and, or, uh, yeah, nine hundred and ninety-two thousand, um, dollars. And will be a sixty-nine dollar average increase per residential household. Um, our franchise taxes are at two point seven seven million. This is the one where there was good news when I went to look at the actual data. Uh, we did have a five hundred thousand dollar increase in the franchise taxes and then our other taxes, uh, totaled eight hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Okay, so I'm gonna dive into taxes a little bit and just do a review, review of them. So our sales tax, uh, in Midvale is seven point two five percent. And as you can see from the pie chart, the local tax, the piece that comes to Midvale is one percent. Excuse me, um, so I had fun making this little graphic of a penny. For every dollar that is spent in Midvale. Uh, there's one percent prop- or one penny of property tax that is generated and the way that comes back, it all goes to the state. And then the way that it comes back to Midvale is that half of that penny comes to us if it was spent in Midvale. And then the other half goes into a pool that looks at the population of the entire state and is distributed to each lo- uh, local government. Based on the population in that government, out of the whole of the state. Um, so for our sales tax, we're projecting eleven point four million dollars and some, here's you can see our historical sales tax revenue. Um, we've been lucky, uh, well, okay, I'm gonna go down my bullet points here. So just, the, the sales tax is distributed to the city monthly by the state tax commission, but it's on a two-month delay. So what were distributed in May, uh, is from March sales and sales tax is the most susceptible tax to economic trends. Depends on how much money people are spending. Um, and while we had high growth in co- post-COVID years, um, we had large sales tax increases. But the economy is showing a slowing in consumer spending and so that's why we're only projecting us a one percent growth. Um, we're right on track for our, our year to date for fiscal year twenty-three. And so I think, I think it's conservative and reasonable to project a one percent increase in our sales tax for, uh, twenty-four. Twenty-five. My brain is in three different fiscal years, so I'm sorry if I messed that up. Um, okay, for for property taxes, uh, this is the general overview of how they're calculated. What the assessor does is assess everyone's property tax value and then we take the previous year's property tax revenue. We add in any new growth the city had and then they divide that by the assessed property tax value of the entire city, something like three hundred billion dollars. Or something, a really big number. And that gives us our certified tax rate, which would keep our revenue as the same as it was in the previous year. So it does this weird thing is when assessed values go up, our tax rate goes down and that's how we generate equal revenue. Similarly, if assessed values go down, then the tax rate goes up, but that's meant to mean that we generate equal revenue. Um, so, uh, just the assessed property tax value is a total assessed value less any allowable exemptions. The main one in Utah is that residential, uh, primary residential, uh, properties get a forty-five percent exemption. Um, so if you wish to, uh, if an entity wishes additional revenue beyond new growth, then you have to go through a process called truth and taxation. Which is essentially a series of public hearing and notices and then the council can vote on that. Um, I wanted to note that Midvale residents pay taxes to eleven different taxes, property taxes to eleven different entities. Um, Midvale City is six percent of your overall property tax. Um, bill and if you look at the table on the side, you can see if your total bill, this is based on the average residential value for twenty twenty-three. Um, your total bill is, uh, thirty-six hundred dollars. Essentially, the portion that comes to Midvale City is only two hundred and fourteen dollars. So we say thirty-two percent, that sounds really scary, but it's not of your overall bill, it's just of that Midvale portion. Um, so to the property taxes, essentially, we're proposing that we need four point one million dollars in property taxes. Like I said before, that, um, includes one percent of growth, which is thirty-one thousand. Um, the property tax increase, thirty-two percent generates nine hundred and ninety-two thousand. And again, the average residential property value in Midvale is about four hundred and thirty-eight thousand. That's from twenty twenty-three. Um, the. Tax commission operates on a calendar year. We operate on a fiscal year, so we don't have the twenty twenty-four numbers yet. Um, so of a, uh, average residential property, the increase would be to two hundred and eighty-three dollars annually. Which is about a sixty-nine dollar increase and then for a commercial property of the same value, um, that would put them paying five hundred and fifteen. Dollars, which is about a hundred and twenty-five dollar annual increase. Um, by adopting this tentative budget, that does not mean that you're adopting the tax increase. So just a reminder. Okay, um, uh, the ongoing expenditures, I'm gonna go through each department, but this is like the overall. But this is like the overall view of what has been requested, um, in the general fund expenditures. We have public safety increases of one point eight five million dollars, that includes UPD, UFA, uh, our contract for our. Emergency services and our animal control contract. Um, the salary increases in the general fund are a hundred and ninety two thousand, that includes a three percent COLA, two percent merit. Um, end market and midpoint adjustments, our benefit increases are ninety three thousand, that was with our medical insurance. Increasing two point five percent and dental four point five. Um, we have IT equipment increases of forty eight thousand, our liability insurance increased ten. We're proposing a city hall art program of, for five thousand, the communication software that was presented to you recently for twelve point five. Other general software increases for twelve, uh, request for event software for twelve thousand. Uh, and then just overall across to all the departments in the general fund, operating increases of forty two thousand. And then there is a, a request for building official and plan review FTEs for two hundred and seventy eight, but that's offset by a reduction in our current. Contract with an outside, um, company, and then I also wanted to note that throughout the department, similarly to last year, anywhere that we could cut, we did. The departments know that we're in a tight spot, they know what public safety is costing, and they have responded to that, and in addition, cut thirty five thousand dollars out of their budgets.
Real quick, before you go to the next slide, um, can you, um, re-explain the two percent merit, is that up to two percent?
It is up to two percent based on performance evaluations.
Okay, so, um, are there some employees, and maybe this is a discussion for another time, I don't necessarily love merit increases. Cause, um, you know, it's very subjective some of the times. Are there some employees like, that, who get zero?
I'm gonna let Matt answer that one.
It's not common, but it happens.
Okay. Um, okay, I'll think about that, um, cause I generally don't think that that's a fair way to. Increase people's pay, um, but we can go on.
Question.
Oh yeah.
Uh, UFA, that's not part of our budget.
Um, the, our contract for our emergency manager is, so we pay a portion of their salary because he's here two days a week as our emergency manager. Yeah. Yep, okay, for one-time expenditures in the general fund, we have the grants that we, uh, offer every year to the Boys and Girls Club Arts Council CBC and the Hillcrest Sports. Um, there's a request for the renewable energy program that was presented by the Next Gen Initiative for twenty thousand. Um, we have a one-time request for outside legal counsel, some things coming up this year for sixty thousand. Harvest days for ninety thousand, and then the transfer to the capital projects fund for the public works facility for three million dollars. Alright, we'll go through these pretty quickly, um, for general government in the general fund, that includes all of those departments right there, I'm not gonna read them. That totals twelve point five percent of the general fund budget, about three point eight million dollars. This entire budget is up one percent from the twenty four amended budget notable requests. And we'll have this across all of them, are the salary and benefit increases broken out by departments, the new communication software, the renewable energy program, and the city hall art program. Public safety, uh, just over fourteen million, makes up forty seven percent of the general fund. This is an increase from, of fifteen percent from last year, this has the fifteen percent increase from UPD. Um, for one point seven million dollars, and then, uh, notably, the animal control contract also increased sixty four thousand dollars. Um, for administrative services, this makes up about eight point seven percent of the general fund, two point six million dollars. An increase of under one percent with the salaries and benefits, we also have the existing software increases for IT and the new event software that would also be paid for out of IT. For public works, uh, three point two, for the public works departments out of the general fund. Um, three point two million dollars for their total budget, about ten point seven percent of the general fund. They have an overall increase of three point four percent from last year, their salaries and benefits, and then the minor, minor operating increases of six thousand dollars. Uh, and that, that includes the cuts that they made throughout their budgets as well. Uh, community development is about five and a half percent of the general fund, uh, one point six million dollars, has a decrease of four percent from last year. Um, has the salary and benefit increases, and then the addition of the building official and plan reviewer. Okay, I've, any questions on the general fund? Into the debt service.
Do you know, sorry, do you know the percent, um, that's going to UPD this year based on those numbers?
What do you mean?
It's always been in between forty eight, forty nine percent, our entire general fund goes to UPD.
Well, I don't know, for all of public safety, it's forty seven percent, but UPD is.
It's still just under.
Yeah, it is like forty, yeah, yeah. Um, okay, and the debt service fund, this is where we pay, uh, debt service that is to the city as a whole. Um, and so that, we have, uh, for revenue, transfers from the general fund, and then we also have some pass-through, um, loans for some developers in the RDA. Um, so we'll pay our bonds for, uh, the portion of the NPA that the general fund pays. Bless you, um, the sales tax bond, and then the two loans for, for the parking structures. Um, okay, the capital projects fund, last year was like three million dollars or something, so this is a drastic increase. We have a twenty eight million dollar budget in the capital projects fund, so a million dollars of revenue comes in for sales, from sales tax into the capital projects fund. We use that for sidewalk curb and gutter replacement and pavement management. Um, and then we have HB two forty four funding, which, uh, includes both five hundred thousand dollars for fifteen years. So total seven point five million dollars, and then an additional one point nine six million was awarded to us in the last legislative session, specifically for the Center Street. Um, project, so we'll be using that one point nine six for the Center Street project, and then financing against the remaining of the seven point five million. To do the infrastructure on Stag Street, um, from our interest earned, for, from our fund balance, we have facility maintenance of about forty thousand. And then the citywide mural program of twenty thousand. And then for the, uh, public, public, public works facility, that we've got a total budget of nineteen million for that. Three million coming from the general fund, four million will come from the water fund from the ARPA money that we received over the last couple of years. And then the capital projects fund will also put three million of their fund balance in there, and then we will find, finance the remaining nine million dollars for that. And then we also have a grant for sixty five thousand dollars, uh, that has a ten thousand dollar match for the Porter Rockwell Trail Study. Any questions? Alright, the water fund has total revenues of seven point eight, the water and sewer funds are both gonna look, uh, kinda weird drastically down. Because we bonded in the last, um, fiscal year, so their revenues and expenditures are significantly decreased, um, and they are both budgeted, prepared. They're both prepared, uh, for the five-year comprehensive financial sustainability plan that was completed in twenty twenty one. Um, their total expenditures in the water fund are eleven point three million, this is down twenty two percent from last year. Their salary and benefit increases, which match the rest of the city's, uh, proposed amounts are a hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars. They have operating increases of thirty nine thousand, um, the Jordan Valley Water, uh, contract has changed, we're now paying, like our. Uh, storage has decreased, but the amount that we have to pay, uh, for the occasional, uh, capital projects has increased. But then the water isn't quite as expensive, so there's been some negotiations, and so taking all of those different ups and downs into account, our. Contract has increased a hundred and thirty two thousand dollars, um, we have scheduled capital projects of one point three million in addition to the bonding projects from last year. And then we'll transfer the ARPA funds, um, for, to the capital projects fund for the public works facility. Uh, in the sewer fund, total revenues are just over four million dollars, a decrease of twenty five percent. Also prepared, uh, uh, via the CFSP, and also down because they bonded last year. Um, the total expenditure, expenditures are three point seven, uh, million dollars, down thirty percent. Their salary and benefit increases in the sewer fund are twenty thousand dollars, have operating increases of sixty one thousand. The South Valley operating capital increases this year are a hundred and forty five thousand, and the scheduled capital projects in the sewer fund are two hundred and ninety four thousand. Um, in the stormwater fund, the overall budget is about two point three million dollars, this is a decrease of four percent in operating. But last year we used fund balance in the stormwater fund, um, so even though our, uh, budget has decreased. I am projecting, or I am, uh, proposing a four percent increase to the stormwater fee. There's a stormwater master plan and rates study currently underway, um, but it's going to require, I'm sure. If we have capital needs and things that come through that, a greater increase in four percent, so I think if we do that this year, don't use, um, fund balance for ongoing costs. Then we can make it so that that, those increases can be a little more incremental, it would change the monthly fee from nine dollars to nine dollars and thirty six cents. Um, and then notable request for expenditures are salary and benefit increases for thirty five thousand dollars. In the street lighting fund, um, the total budget is a hundred and eighty seven thousand, this is another weird one, decreased fifty three percent. The streetlight portion of the two thousand twelve MBA series bond matured in fiscal year twenty four, so there was. It was both being subsidized by the general fund and the streetlight fund was, um, paying a portion of that bond payment. Now that that's done, we have two hundred and eleven thousand dollars of generated revenue in the street lighting fund. That we're requesting to maintain the streetlight fee, to fund a master plan, capital improvements and a rate study. And then from there, decide what to do with that streetlight fee that was, uh, funding the bond payment. Uh, for notable request for the expenditures, salary and benefit increases are a thousand dollars. Um, in the sanitation fund, we have a total budget of one point six million dollars, this is a seven point two percent increase. Here again, we just have contractual increases of, uh, minimum of sixty two thousand dollars, we also have some weird. Because we're changing, changing to the Trans Jordan landfill, but the timing is weird, and we're getting a new con- we'll have to go out again for our garbage services. So we have one-time tipping fees that we're gonna pay for with one-time money of thirty five thousand dollars, just while we don't know exactly what's gonna happen there. But we do have a contractual, contractual increases of sixty two thousand dollars, to cover that, I'm also proposing a four percent increase in sanitation rates. Which will incrementally increase, uh, garbage and recycling fees. Yeah, and then the other notable request is salary and benefit increases of a thousand dollars. Um, the telecommunications fund, which is basically just paying Utopia, has a total budget of nine hundred and ninety nine thousand dollars. I did learn today that we are getting twenty thousand dollars more from Utopia this year, that will be reflected in the final budget, it's not in this tentative budget. Which will, uh, decrease the amount the general fund has to, uh, put into telecommunications fund, so that will go in and will actually help decrease the property tax increase. Um, basically, the entirety of this budget is our pledge payment to Utopia, which is nine hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars. Um, our, our two internal services funds are fleet and IT, the total budget for the fleet fund is just over two million dollars. This is a three percent increase from last year, um, we have an increase in vehicle operating costs of twenty two thousand dollars, gas and parts and everything be more expensive. Um, and then we'll spend about one point four million dollars on vehicle and equipment replacement, that's a part of our ongoing capital replacement plan for the vehicles. Um, the IT depo- IT, uh, internal service fund budget is five hundred and forty thousand dollars, this is a thirty five percent increase. Um, one of the things we did was look at all the softwares that serve all parts of the city and move those into this fund. Because they, the costs of this fund are distributed by all the, to, all the departments in the city. So we, uh, moved about eighteen thousand dollars of software and internet into the internal service fund, and then distributed that across the departments, the cost of that. Um, there are two software requests, uh, in the IT fund here, one is Esri Enterprise, which is our GIS software. Um, and, uh, I think Glenn and our GIS department think that that's a good thing, it creates, so we, all you, all users in the city can use Esri and upgrades that software. And then proof point is, so we've got this thing going with the state, where they're going to take on some of our security software. So we can reduce some of our costs that way, and, um, one of our biggest vulnerabilities is our email system and getting scam emails, phishing emails coming in. Proof point, uh, allows us to be more on top of, like, dictating what emails can actually get through. And that's like one of our greatest risks, is that we try our best to train everyone, but our biggest, uh, risk is our people clicking on something they shouldn't. Um, whoa, okay, um, there's, we're getting new community development software, budgeting for that. We have our, this money was put aside, so it's just using fund balance of two hundred thousand dollars to pay for that, now that it's come time. Um, we have requests for new copiers, thirty two thousand dollars, uh, for all of city hall and, uh, public works. And then that, though, that will go into our replacement plan and be a part of, uh, our annual replacement, and then we have a scheduled hardware replacement of forty thousand dollars. Any questions?
Definitely mouthful.
Yeah.
Too late for questions.
Okay, well, that's easy for me.
No, I, I will say, uh. We, I, I'm not super excited about this budget year, um, I'm not, I'm not excited that, uh, where we're at is this. The thirty two percent, uh, property tax increase, but also recognizing, uh, the amount of work that has gone into keeping unified police. Uh, alive and well, and making sure that our community continues to have that service, and recognizing that that was over one point seven million alone, that increase. And so, uh, knowing that ours, that, that what this is recommending is that we're trying to collect that nine hundred and ninety two thousand. But UPD alone was one point seven, um, just having to go through this reorganization. Um, I'm both not excited for it, and I'm also proud of it, cause I think it shows all the other work that has gone into keeping this as low as possible.
And I'm not a, a, a intrinsically like negative person, but I did start this budget season like, oh, we're gonna have to have a hundred percent property tax increase. And as I worked with everyone and saw the different things coming into place, I was grateful every time I could go back to the place in my spreadsheet that showed what our property tax increase. And it just gradually decreased the entire budget season, which I'm grateful for the work of the departments and, and the other things that came together for that.
Thank you, I appreciate that a lot.
And when my assistant quit too, I still am here, have this complete budget.
Mayor, I moved that we open public comment.
Second.
We have a motion to second, open the public comment on the budget, all in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Alright, moving to public comment, do we have any public comments on this item?
Mayor, I moved that we close public comment.
Second.
As motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, public comment is closed on that item. Uh, so we do have an action item with this, consider resolution number twenty twenty four R twenty one, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty five tentative budget of Midvale City. Beginning July first twenty twenty four and ending June thirtieth twenty twenty five.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second, any further discussion on that? Rory, would you call roll please?
Yes, Councilmember Gettle.
Yes.
Billings?
Yes.
Glover?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
And Brown?
Yes.
That passes, thank you. Alright, uh, what I'm gonna propose is, cause we've had this nice gentleman sitting here waiting for this discussion. On amending private street standards to meet public street standards, that we amend our agenda and bring that up to now. We had to get through all the public hearings first, but now we, we can bring that up and then continue on to the consent and action after that.
So moved.
We have, we have motion as second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, yes.
Any opposed? Alright, so, we're gonna do that, Adam, you are up. And just a reminder, there's no decision on this tonight, this is just, this is how we operate discussion generally, and then.
Alright, thank you mayor and council, uh, this item, as you've stated, is a discussion item, uh, relating to. Potentially amending our private street standards to match our public street standards. I was like, wait. Alright, so I'll, uh, go ahead and give an intro, so right now, if a developer comes in to Midvale and wants to propose private streets. Uh, we have a number of existing subdivisions with private streets, um, some of those we inherited from the county when, um, annexations were done a number of years ago. And then we also have newer ones that meet our current private street standards. Um, if a developer were to come in and propose private streets, there is a right-of-way width of thirty five feet, and that includes, uh, twenty feet of pavement. And then it can, um, also have a sidewalk on one side or both sides of the private street. Now, a public street, uh, the right-of-way width is fifty feet, uh, there's a twenty five foot pavement width, and then sidewalks are required on both sides. Us, as staff, um, we recommend that the, that, uh, private streets in Midvale would match public street standards. Uh, this is for, there's a few reasons, one of which, uh, let's say a development comes in, it's developed with private streets. Um, the HOA is, um, responsible for maintaining those, and let's say a number of years pass and they just, there is no money in their. Um, through their funds to make those repairs, uh, there might be issues under the street as well, and they come to the city and say, can you please take this over for us? If those private streets match a public street standard, it's that much easier for us to go ahead and take that over. There's nothing, um, in state law or in any code that requires us to take over any public street right now. And I would imagine that that would carry forward, that there would still be no requirement that we do so. Uh, but if the private street were built to a public street standard, uh, with right-of-way and whatnot, then it does make it. Quite a bit easier for us to take that over, should we need to one day. Uh, this item was discussed at the April tenth Planning Commission meeting, um, and there was a number of, uh, back and forth. a number of back and forth comments, pros and cons to it. In the end, the Planning Commission felt that our current private street standards remain. And if requests for that come forward, then we just deal with those kind of on a case by case basis. They felt that the current private street standards allowed for a greater amount of infill development. But they also saw the wisdom in requiring those to be the same width and standard as public streets, so they could be more easily taken over one day if, if that request came up. So they were split, but in the end, they recommended that the standards remain as they are. So we'll have this discussion tonight and if you as a council feel that there is support for amending those private streets to the public street standards, then we will bring back an ordinance that shows such. One thing I noted at the Planning Commission, this does not, this does not do away with private streets. So private streets would still be allowed, the incentives of private streets would still be allowed. Right now, there's an incentive of maybe a ten percent density increase. We're not proposing to take that away. We're just proposing that those private streets meet that public street standard. I have taken some pictures of different private streets here in Midvale. This is over in the Bingham Junction area. This is one of the private streets that they have opted to do sidewalks on both sides. It's a narrower pavement width. You see, there's kind of a bulb out for visitor parking there on the left side of the picture. This is also in Bingham Junction. This is just kind of down a cul-de-sac or it kind of bends to the southeast there near the Top Golf area. Again, this has sidewalks on both sides, but it is a narrower pavement width. And so that could create some parking issues if people are parked there on that street at night. Here's another one in that general area. This one has no sidewalks, so this could have been done when there was not a sidewalk requirement. Like I said, now you are required to have sidewalks on one side or you can opt to have them on both, but this is clearly one where there is none. This is a brand new development. This is the Mills development off of Eightieth South. This is phase one. It's a Garbet subdivision. They have opted to do private streets and they were approved as such. This was in the middle of the day showing vehicles parked on the sidewalk just to try to maintain some two-way traffic ability on that street. This is another private street. This is just north of the Mills. This is a little further east down Eightieth. This is on the north side. This is, I don't remember the name of the subdivision, but there's a street on both sides that's identical to this. They've opted to do sidewalks on both sides and at the time, there were no cars parked on this street. That could be also an H O A requirement that they are not allowed. And then this is a final picture that I have. This is off of Seventh East, I believe it's Seventh. It's, oh my gosh, the developer escapes me, Brad Reynolds. This is his newer development. These are townhomes and triplexes off of that in this development. And again, this has private streets with sidewalks on both sides. So with that, as staff, I can answer questions. Glenn's here to answer questions, Nate can answer questions, and I've asked Keith to come as well. Ironically, we have not had a request for a public or a private street to be turned over to the city and this afternoon we got one. And so Keith can speak to that if, if he so chooses, but all of us are here to help answer questions.
Well, that, that was going to be my question then is, do we have an example of like somebody coming and saying, we want you to take this over, but they don't have sidewalks or something and the community's coming, that neighborhood's coming to us and saying, hey, will you pay to put in this infrastructure?
I've not, I've not, I've not been aware of anyone coming in and saying, will you put in sidewalks? It's more of, we just cannot maintain this street or we don't feel we should be maintaining this anymore. It acts as a public street, therefore please take it over. That's kind of the request we got today on that one.
Andrew Stoddard's neighborhood is asking.
That is Andrew Stoddard's neighborhood?
The same one, is that what it's called? Yeah. They've been asking me for six years.
Okay. Do, maybe for Garrett, do we pick up liability if we take over a street that doesn't have the infrastructure that we would require as a city? They don't have a sidewalk? Is that an issue or if stormwater is weird or non-existent or I don't?
I, I think those are all things to consider, right? I mean, when we take on those, those obligations, they already have impact on how Glenn and Keith are designing and thinking about systems. They already do to some extent, but now they're, the, all of the maintenance becomes their responsibility to figure out and how to integrate.
It, it does make things harder to maintain, harder to plow, et cetera. If you go back through some of those pictures, the one with the garbage cans, for example, a garbage truck on that street, you're going to have to wait to get around it. There's not going to be two-way traffic. It, it does make things harder to, to maintain and get large equipment in and out. And the Essex Court example was good. If the fire truck's there, you're stuck.
Actually, in, in one of these communities in Salem or this, and mine does not have sidewalks. And I think our H O A at this point is now considering, trying to figure out how to put them in to approach the city because it's caused a lot of issues as well for us in a small, a very small H O A. So is, is it required that if we are going to take them over, that they meet the current standards or is, for some reason I had that in my head that they?
There really would be no way to make them meet current standards if we take them over now. It's just, we would take them over as they are. In other areas that I've worked, it was a relatively new development that went in and they had narrower streets. And immediately, once the H O A took over, they came to the city and asked that the city take it over because they knew they weren't, it was going to be so hard to maintain those. And the city said no. Again, the city's not obligated to, but it can happen.
We, I believe in the past, I haven't been in the same area, there had been some discussion on that. I believe what we had said was that, because it was, didn't have, like it had a sidewalk that ended in a weird spot, bad drainage, all that kind of stuff. And this is a little while ago, but I, I believe at that time we had said, we weren't going to consider it unless, we weren't going to take it over and then have to then install a bunch of stuff in order to support that. And this is sort of in that same vein, which is, as soon as we take it over, neighbors, neighbors are then expecting like, you know, you go one generation out and then people are going to say, why doesn't my street have sidewalks? And it's because the original developers of that, in order to make their project pencil, chose these, made these decisions that no one's going to recall once, you know, you get a generation out and then it will be the responsibility of the rest of the city in order to figure it out if we take anything over. And, you know, in order to make that, just like I said, possible, that's why this discussion is happening.
I would say, I'm, that Mills project photo makes me real nervous. Because that's only like fifteen percent build out or twenty percent build out. I, I can't imagine the city trying to take this over, like getting a plow right there when that's a hundred percent build out is not happening, which was my only complaint about that, was I hate that we allow this because even though we think, oh, well, they'll, they'll set standards where they can't do this. I mean, people need to park their car. And so like here, I, I just can't imagine, like where are those people going to park? You know, I, I know we have like winter ordinances and stuff, but like this makes me real nervous. Like this seems like a long-term problem that we, like I think these little, like if there's five or six homes, this kind of allowance is probably okay, but with, there's going to be what, a hundred and something? Like I don't, I can't imagine the city wanting to take this over.
Mayor, I know it's unusual, but could we open this discussion item to public comment?
He was distracting me. Will you say that again?
I would like to move to open this discussion item to public comment, if there is any.
Okay, can I ask one more question for Adam?
Sure.
What does this do for existing private streets? Because what I heard was they could add, if we were to take over a private street, this does not necessarily require them to get it up to street standards. This, is this just for new streets?
Yeah, if, if the ordinance has changed, it would be that, the change would be that any development that proposes private streets, it matches the public street standards. So you can still have them, they're just built to the same width and standard of public streets. It doesn't do anything to force the upgrade of existing private streets. It's just for new developments that propose them from here forward or from, if it's passed forward.
Unless we decide that if you want the city to take over, you have to bring it up to that.
And that could be a policy.
That could be a policy.
This, this would just be for new streets moving forward.
Understand, but we could, if we can make that policy, if you want the city to take over, you have to bring it up to the standards.
That would be, for sure, that would be a council decision that you could make.
You know, that's just like, needs to be done.
So we've got a motion to open public comment on this. Was there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, we'll open that up for public comment. If you'd like to say something, come on up.
Mike Nancy. This street that they're showing right here, there's one right across the street from where we're trying to build and it's similar to this one, but it's got high back cutter, so gutters, so all the cars park on the street. There's barely room for one car to get between them, let alone your plows going down there in the winter. A lot of times, well, there's been a couple of times I've seen where the plows have pulled up and stopped, backed out and went somewhere else. And that was a street you people put in. And Third East is the same way for a short stretch where you guys came in and remodeled the street, widened this north end of it, widened the south end of it, but right in the middle, you narrowed it down to thirty feet. And that's right where we're going to be coming in with our driveway is right there where that thirty feet is, or not driveway, but our roadway.
Thank you.
Mayor, move that we close public comment. Never mind.
No.
Ken Jackson. I live at sixty seventh, sixty, South Three Hundred East. Okay, we're trying, we have been tasked by my, my wife's parents that we have to sell that, the property that they own. So we're trying to get it sold. This proposal has already lost us four hundred thousand dollars in offers. We had a buyer who was willing to pay us two point six million for the property. Our, our current property offer is one point five. So we're just, we're kind of frustrated about this. The other thing is if you make, our, the developer who buys this, put in a fifty foot right of way, there's a thirty five foot right of way on the side of my house that I have to have to get into my property. If you make it fif, make them have fifty foot, that road is going to be five feet from my, from the side of my house. So if there's anything you can do to help us out with that, we would love to be able to get this property sold, put some beautiful twin homes in there. I'm, I'm, I'm interested to find out about this proposal if somebody's come to ask you to take over a street.
Just so I can gather my bearings, will you tell me again where that property is located?
Okay, we're, well, there's a couple of different addresses. Sixty seventh, sixty is my house. Sixty seventh, sixty six is Michael's parents' house. She just passed away and so we're tasked to sell the property. There's approximately just a little under three acres there, I think. Is that right?
What, what?
Yeah. So.
So, so sixty, seven, sixty, South Three Hundred East?
Yeah. And as to what Mike was saying, we measured the street in front of my house, the pavement, from back of the curb to the back of the curb on that street, it's thirty five feet wide. And we have, we have quite a ways. When, when you, when we put high back curb down Third East, we asked them why they narrowed it down. They said, well, because you guys own to the middle of the street. We said, we'll give you this, we'll, we'll let you have that. And they said, well, we can't, the contractor, I don't know who we were talking to, but he said, we can't do that. So yeah, we can't accept that. So and I'm going like, anyway. But so we're, we're just concerned about the proposal to have these brought up to, to, to the street standards. And I understand this problem because as Mike said, a coma road going up east of us has that same problem. Third East in front of my house has the same problem. It's too narrow. You can't park cars on both sides and get two cars down the road. When I go out to get my mail, my wife says she takes her life in her hands every time she goes out to get the mail out of the box. So we don't have one of those boxes that you can get out of the back. We have to go to the front something anyway. But anyway, so thanks for listening.
Adam, if this came back before the council, would that be a public hearing or just an action?
It would be a public hearing.
Thank you. Any further, do we want to make a motion to close the public comment?
Motion to close the public comment.
Thank you. Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Okay, public comment is closed. Further questions, comments for Adam?
Yes, I, I, and I don't understand the whole situation here, but I mean, as, as of right now, he could apply and have the thirty five feet, right? Isn't that correct? As long as he does it before, if we change this, I, I'm just trying to understand why. Because I mean, obviously, we wouldn't want it less than thirty five feet, I would think.
So because we've initiated these proceedings right now, if this were to pass, they would be obligated to meet whatever the standard is because we've already initiated the amendment process.
Just, so I just wanted to clarify what, so I understood.
But it does make sense because we are in essence protecting the city from future developments coming to the city and having us, whether or not we have them go to the current standards, these roads are more narrow, this creates a burden on the city for these projects that could, could not approach the city hypothetically. So I mean, I definitely see why we're trying to do this. I think this is a good idea.
It does somewhat create a burden, but it might not if we say they have to bring it back. If, we will not take it back unless they've come up to the current standards.
How do they widen their roads? Like if they're, you know what I mean?
Then you don't take it back.
I mean, that's, basically that's what we're, we're creating because I mean, the majority of these projects that are go in, they don't have the roads. That's, I'm sorry, and I'm not trying to say they, but I feel like that's exactly why my property was built the way it was, so they could get those narrow roads in.
They can get more units.
I mean, I think if we say that, then we might as well not even look at any of them because none of them are going to be able to be approved.
I think it's, yeah, if, if the issue is exactly that, like having private streets that are rededicated to the city and we can't safely maintain them, then like the policy should be, we don't take back private streets unless they're fifty, unless they meet the fifty foot standard. You know, that's pretty easy. Like we're not, like you said, we're not obligated to take back any private street.
Well, I, I would say that it sounds easy in concept, but when we're talking about the, the amount of money that it would take to widen it, it's pretty substantial, plus all the impacts on the zoning. I mean, you already are allowing setbacks based on private street standards. And so how does anyone widen the street and still meet the zoning requirements?
Can I, I can't see him now, but Keith is back there and he's been waiting patiently this whole time. Keith, you want to come up and just, if you've got two, this is our city engineer. If you want to add your two cents into this conversation, it'd be helpful.
Well, yeah, for whatever it's worth. Yeah, like Adam said, it's kind of ironic. We haven't had a, a request. We have, over the years, had H O As or, or individuals come and ask the city to take over a private street. Typically, those have been denied because obviously they don't meet, you know, our, our minimum requirements. Typically, those have been, um, denied, because obviously they don't meet, uh, you know, our, our minimum requirements. Uh, we did get a request, actually, just, um, I think the email came in last night. There does present a lot of, I think, a lot of issues when we are asked to take over a private street. Many of them have been discussed. Um, do we take it as is and, and just deal with it? That presents a lot of issues with maintenance, snow plowing, those sorts of things. If the improvements aren't there, if they don't have curb gutter, if there's not sidewalk, you know, then we take on that, uh, uh, that expense to try to improve those. Over the years, we have, um, dealt with private streets. A great example is just to the east of us, all the avenues, um, pretty much are private streets. Most of the property owners owned some portion or half the road or whatever. Um, back in the early two thousands, we started a program using CDBG funds to improve all the avenues. And we went through and basically went from like fence line to fence line and fit in what, I mean, what we could fit in. Um, and required those residents to dedicate whatever portion they, they owned of that street uh, to the city, and then we went through and rebuilt the streets, kind of avenue by avenue, every year until we got them done, again, using CDBG money. So, it's been done, but I think in something like the avenues, it was kind of to the city's advantage. To do something like that, they were being used as public streets. We were plowing and maintaining them as best we could, uh, you know. Prior to that, this just made, um, that simpler. Having private streets meet city street standards would make it easier going forward if an HOA decided in the future they wanted to, uh, turn that over to the city, then we would have the confidence to know that they are built, um, structurally according to our standards, plus we would have all the amenities that, uh, you know, that we require as far as curb gutter, sidewalk, and those types of things. Um, it's, it's a difficult, um, you know, difficult decision. Uh, I can understand. You, you know, you live in an HOA, uh, you pay HOA dues, um, streets are expensive to maintain, and, um, Glenn and I argue back and forth over who's paying for what sometimes, and, um, you know, just trying to stretch our budgets where, you know, however we can, so, so it, it is a dilemma, and I can understand on the developer's side, you know, you're losing that property that's another, you know, fifteen feet width. You're having to, to give up on all your streets. You know, that, there's a cost to that. On the other hand, um, there's a cost to us if we were to, uh, take those over. Obviously, as, uh, Councilmember Glover said, our policy could be, we just don't, unless they built, you know, bring them up to city standards. A lot of places, like I think of any actually, where that would be possible simply because of the setbacks and, and trying to increase that fifteen feet width. You know, where, where do you get that? You know, which side of the road, or do you split it, and then, you know, and then the setbacks don't work, so. Yeah, it's a dilemma, but I like the idea of going forward. Unless, uh, you know, unless a decision is, private streets are private streets, um, the city's gonna deny any requests in the future going forward, and then we leave it as, leave it as it is. If there's some interest in saying, okay, we can, the city could look into doing the, you know, taking over a private street, especially if it's a smaller HOA, and, you know, those HOA costs, um, can get pretty, uh, expensive. If the street's to the city's standards and, um, you know, the city decides to take it over, then that makes that a simpler process. So, kind of from my perspective, um, and maybe this is too, too simple, I guess, but from my perspective, if, if we look at city streets and say, we're never gonna even consider taking them, then leave it as is. If there's a consideration that, yeah, maybe in the future we'll want to do that, then let's make the private streets city street standards.
And at that point, they may as well just be city streets.
And at that point, there's really no advantage to having a private street. You just put a dedicated street in to begin with.
My perspective on this, I think, is going to be that private streets are private streets, and, and that's it. I don't see any real reason to ever pick up a private street, um, especially, most of those, if not all, private streets have some sort of homeowners association. They're certainly not gonna reduce their cost to their residents, and, and one of the biggest costs in any HOA is maintaining the roads, so. It seems like a non-issue to me.
I don't know. I think that's true for a lot of them, but I think a, a road like, like Andrew Stoddart's would, would pretty much not have an HOA anymore. I think there's...
They don't have any community property.
No, yeah, the only, I don't even, is garbage for that area done by Hace even? Yes, they all, so I think you're normally right, but there are a few that, that would not be the case, right? Because that's just, that one doesn't really make a lot of sense to me, because they have the space, I think, to, they have the space to widen the road, to...
Is this Larson Lane you're talking about?
Yeah, is that what it's called? Yeah, uh, uh, you know, on the north side, they could, you know, there's, there's huge law. The south side where the ivory put in those homes, there's not. Where, like this one, like, you know, the one on the screen, you know, obviously, that's built to that fence on the, you know, the one side. And, and, you know, taking, you know, fifteen feet out of the front yard, that's not, you know, that's not gonna happen, right? We, we knew that when we approved it, but that was, they, if they would have taken three homes out, we probably would have been fine, but they needed all, all of them.
I don't know, Garrett, if, because like, what, what Councilmember Dettle said, and, uh, I personally feel like I would lean towards saying the city's not gonna take it over if it, unless it's to city standards, and just having that policy, that if somebody came and asked, then we had a clear line of, well, it's not to city standards. Now, recognizing that those that are already built, uh, very unlikely that we, that they would be able to get it to city standard, but at least that in my mind going forward is, like, these folks are looking at their property. That's a decision that could be made, and understanding many years down the line from now, what, what options do we want to be available to this?
That's a hundred percent up to the council.
I didn't know if there was any, like, legal concern with it, or just that it would make it pretty impossible for them to do.
I mean, if that, so, you can make whatever policy decisions you want as a council, and also recognizing those aren't permanent. A future council can always change that, so if that's what you want your coun- the council's position to be, that is only the council's position so long as the six of you are on the council.
Five, we may.
He, he's still part of the council.
We may.
So, I mean, some things to, I, I think some things to also consider as well, HOAs are not permanent either per se, in the sense that, uh, we have seen some communities, like in Eagle Mountain, where they have gone defunct because they have not collected the money accordingly, and then it's left up to the city to try and figure out how are we gonna provide services to these residents where this was an HOA responsibility? Whether it's maintaining parks, open space, um, snow removal, trash, whatever it may be. So, I know there is an idea of a certain amount of permanence with these HOAs, but that also is relying on the assumption that they are well managed, and that the people who are doing them are actually staying on top of the maintenance, understand the costs, and all of those sorts of things. So, while it may not be a need now, one thing to consider, though, is if an HOA goes defunct, are you gonna feel strongly about your position that we will not take it unless it's a public street standard? When we have UFA or the police department saying we have real problems being able to serve people down this private street, because the HOA is defunct and no one is maintaining it?
The UFA, UPD issue would be not because the road is small or something, it's because the...
The road's falling apart.
The road's falling apart, they're not clearing snow?
Oh, interesting.
Well, what kind of guidance do you want tonight, Adam?
It's ten thirty. We still have more items.
The night's young, I mean, no. It was really just, again, the planning commission went back and forth. In the end, they, they just felt that the way private streets were should remain. Again, they were looking at it as kind of a, it allows for, they felt, greater opportunity for infill development. I think that could be argued one way or the other, but that's kind of where they landed on it. I do appreciate what Keith said. If there is a policy that unless they're to city standards, this council, it is our policy not to take those over and leave it as it is, I mean, if, if that's the case, the planning commission did recommend against an ordinance, so I don't know if that would have to come before you to formally put that to bed, or if, or if we just, I would talk to Garrett on the best way to approach that.
Garrett, are we allowed to say, essentially, private roads like this for just fifteen units or less or something? Because, you know, these little infills, like you're saying, I think there's room, but these hundred, hundred home complexes with private roads, I mean, even if you drive down by Topgolf, it's a nightmare, right? Where there's not, where there's no sidewalk, like they showed, there's nowhere to park, like, we, we shouldn't allow that for a hundred-plus units, in my opinion. Not that there's really any space anymore, and, but, is that even allowed?
Yeah, uh, state law doesn't mention private streets at all. So, this is a, this is a creation of essentially local governments that we're saying that we will allow this, um, and we can remove it completely, we can adjust it to whatever those standards are, because it's not addressed by the state at all.
I say we leave it as is. I mean, this isn't my preferred, um, scenario. I would not want to live, um, in that particular community, because it's just that type of parking halfway on the sidewalk bothers me personally. Um, so, but this is a private community, and, and honestly, it's their problem. It's not, it's not the city of Midvale's problem. And I think it should remain that way. We have enough problems to deal with.
I mean, this is, this is an ADA problem, in my opinion, right? And even though the city's not gonna be sued for it, there still are residents, right? So, I don't want to, I don't want to treat them.
This community should contact the, the police department and say, these cars are parked illegally.
Yeah, well, just, you're not gonna be able to push a wheelchair down that sidewalk, so they're gonna get on the road, and they're still Midvale residents, so that's what my opinion is on that.
Do we have any policy in place right now for accepting private roads? Because I guess that would be, I, I'm open to what that looks like, but to me, it feels like through this conversation, like, I don't like just leaving it, because I feel like there's, and it doesn't have to be the policy that I brought up, like that, what Garrett used to, that, that, that makes a lot of sense to consider, especially the public safety side. But it feels like there should be a policy in place that when this happens, our staff has the ability to go back to it, and it's not just like, well, this city manager said yes, and this one said no, and like, we're all over, like, it feels like, understanding that can still change by a council, but that we should have something, and I, I don't know, that provides some flexibility, but gives staff guidance on when we would do that kind of thing.
I don't know if it's been policy. Historically, in the past, the city has denied requests, whether it was, I don't think, uh, Mr. Dolls faced one yet. Um, I can't remember the last one we had. So, it's been a while. We have had a few over the twenty-five years I've been here. Everyone has been denied by the city, so if that's policy, it's never wavered. We've never kind of gone back and forth and said, yeah, we'll do this, and we won't do that one.
Keith, did those even make it to the city council for consideration, or was it just you or, or the then-city manager just saying no?
It was, I don't know how far up it went. It was a discussion with the city manager. I don't know if that went to the council for discussion, or the mayor, or whatever, but it's kind of, like I said, always been kind of a...
Again, even if that was the, however it was crafted, the situation, the size of development, if that, even if it was a, it goes to council for final decision, it seems like having some sort of policy would make sense.
No policy is a policy.
Could be any policy.
No, I, I think, yeah, to that point, um, I would, wouldn't want us to ever accept a private street unless, like, yes, the homeowners association went defunct, and otherwise, there'd be no maintenance of the street whatsoever. That seems to be a problem that could elevate to us, or, you know, if it, you know, is up to, you know, all of the city standards. But if it's, if it's below city standards, I think the policy should always be to reject any request to take over that street.
I think the problem that that poses, though, is that if we run into a situation where the HOA does go defunct, we now have a project that we can't maintain, that doesn't have the proper streets for garbage and piles and all of that. That, I, I just don't know if we're protecting the city long-term for that. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, it almost sounds like if we're gonna say we're not gonna do this at all, then we need to actually make sure that we're making all private roads to the same uniform, because then future projects aren't subject to that same issue.
That makes sense. I didn't know this topic was gonna be the most complicated we had tonight, so.
Let's talk more about the seventy-two-hundred overlay. Just want to make sure I understand that.
Totally.
Adam, do you have any direction? I don't know if we've given you any direction, but...
So, I, what I'm sensing is that there might be, I'm, it's kind of split. I'm sensing that there's a hesitancy to change it, but that if the city is gonna take them over, they want them to be to public, or basically to public standards.
Is, is there, is this allowed, Garrett? Um, this is something I need to probably think on, maybe other people do too. Can, like, Matt call us individually and be like, what are your thoughts on this? Because we've all had five different opinions on it, and then, and then give direction to Adam, you know, based on some sort of majority from that or something.
So, what went to Planning Commission was a very simple, on-the-surface text amendment.
Yeah, that's how it was.
And, and again, they recommended against it. It didn't mean it died there. It still had to move forward. And so, the policy, as I understand it, and that what, what we've been doing is before, usually before something goes to council, especially of this type of magnitude, it comes to council as a discussion item. That's why it's before you tonight. It wasn't, it was really just as a discussion item. This is what the Planning Commission did. What are your thoughts? Is this something worth moving forward with? If so, we have a draft ordinance ready to move forward. If not, we can either move it forward and it's denied, or somehow it can otherwise go away, and that's, you know, that's really why the discussion item was here.
I know in the past, and up here, because it is a, you've kind of taken a straw poll to say, like, who wants this to be on a future?
I guess, what I'm...
And who doesn't?
In that vein, I mean, I guess what I'm curious, and I didn't get the right count here, I know there's, there's a, this separation, but how many are sort of just on the side of saying that the, we just make sure that it's a formal policy that says, we just don't take private, knowing you can change it in the future, but it's a, we just don't take private roads, we're not changing the standards now? How many of you are leaning in that direction? Uh, in that direction for us to craft something of that, of that nature? And then, I know that there's some who are in the, yes, let's make the standards the same, but I'm not sure what that count is right now, sorry.
Was your first option, no private roads at all?
No, sorry, the first would, I would, okay, so for option one is, we just say, we don't make any changes to the private road requirements as what they are now, but we set a policy that says, we do not take private roads that don't meet our standards, recognizing that there could be something in the future where there's a unique issue where something falls apart, but our, just our general standard is, we don't take private roads. How many of you are in that vote, or in that vein? Okay, so, uh, two in a week, Mayor. The...
Yes!
So then, on this side, is it the, yes, let's change the standard, or look at the standard, or come up with options for the standard?
That would be where I would want to go, if we're gonna say we're not going to take them. them, then we need to make sure that we're protecting the future projects from running into any possible issues where the city ends up having to take on these properties, that would be my only concern, I perfectly find with us saying, no, we're not going to take on city streets, but, for future projects, and they need to be up to city standards so that it doesn't cause any future issues, would be mine. Cup of tea.
And are you sort of in that vein, but, maybe there's an option for smaller developments, so that they can have a different standard, and there's some sort of size threshold we look at trying to?
Yeah, because, like I said, I think this is, this is, in the end, it's gonna be an eyesore, and, and, like I said, there's ADA issues, and they'll have their own issues, again, it's all private, so they can, they've chosen to have those issues, except for once the developer turns the HOA over, and all the citizens, all the residents are like, oh, this actually sucks, you know, we, we should not set people up to, to hate, to hate something, right? A- and, I do think, you know, I keep coming back to the one development that makes sense to me, Andrew Stoddard has the ability to, so I don't know, you know, if that's like, help them at least as far as engineering it, but make them pay for it, or whatever, you know, i- if, if there's areas that can increase their width to match the size so we can take it over, you know, maybe we can at least have our resources on the, you know, planning and engineering side, right, not necessarily pay for the, the new sidewalks or the new roads, right, but, at least, which, I know time is money, and, and Keith is definitely not bored, you know, but, you know, I think, i- if we can help as much as we can, I mean, like I said, this one, this one will never, would never meet it, but, there's probably, I'm thinking of Andrew's, because that's what's on my mind, there's probably a dozen, you know, that, that could be.
Right, Matt, just to clarify, the weak mayor just wants a policy, I just think that's a smart thing to do, I'm, I think that could look a bunch of different ways, this council, and not the weak mayor, the weak mayor won't decide what that looks like, but the rest of the council will, I just think we need to have a policy, so that staff knows how to operate when these come up.
I, I could go with Brian, as far as smaller, smaller developments, but when we get into the larger developments, and I probably would say a lot less than a hundred, I'd say more like twenty-five or so.
Yeah, no, I say agree, yeah.
Yeah, that, if it's a smaller development, then they could maybe work it out, but if it's a big development, then I think they need to meet the cities, even though it's a private road, they need to meet the standards, because you got that many people in there, it's just, makes sense.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Does that...
Usually I would say no, but we're so late and informal, but I need you to come to the microphone, I, I need you to come to the microphone, though, because this is recorded, and with people online, so you, I'll allow you to ask your question, but yeah, I need you to come up to the microphone.
So, again, Ken Jackson, my question is timing on this request, it, because, the minute we put that, our property up for sale, this proposal came forward, and it may just be a coincidence, but I gave up believing in coincidences a long time ago, and it may be an issue down the road, and it may not, but, as I said, we're being, it seems to us as property owners that we're being punished, because we've already lost one buyer, one developer, who was Brad Reynolds, by the way, and we're under contract, if we lose another one, we're gonna lose even more money, so you're taking, this could take money out of, my wife's lived in this city all but four years of her life, we've been here for forty-seven years, I...
I, I appreciate that context, and I, I don't want you to feel like we're trying to pick on you, cause I definitely, that, that's, I'm, I don't think that's any of our intent here, and it is just timing, as you, Garrett, you had mentioned, since this was in the process, that those standards would be from the, this item, but that's already been to Planning Commission, so if we are, like, have to restart, we don't know what that's gonna look like yet, does that reset any of that?
It depends, um, so, without knowing what the next step is, I can't tell you what the impact is, it, it all depends on what the direction of, is of the council of the next step, if we're moving forward with, um, bringing some sort of amended ordinance, but it's still essentially the same thing, then no, it doesn't change anything, if you're saying, kill this, and we're gonna take months to think about it, and this ordinance, the, the potential for this ordinance passing dies, then, yes, uh, we, we revert back to where it worked.
I mean, we're not, I don't know if council has any timeline, but I'm not, in my mind, I'm not going, oh, we need this in two weeks, I, I think personally, I'm going, I feel like we could take some time on this, and...
I'm really concerned with that, that we've got an email request at once, then we have, then the policy for us to take these or not kind of comes into play, it's kind of a domino.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not loving that we're looking at this from two projects, to be honest with you, like, I don't want Midvale residents necessarily to think that, we need to do what's best for Midvale, like, I understand that, you know, maybe you're not getting the millions of dollars you think, and maybe Andrew Stoddard's division isn't getting the exact thing they want, but we should look at this, what makes sense for Midvale, because even though I've mentioned that project a lot, I feel bad about it, because what we need to do is what, what makes sense for Midvale, if we, if we're making a decision based off one project or another project, that is never what's best for Midvale, that's what's best for that group, whether that's Andrew Stoddard or the group here, and so I kinda, I kinda wanna move away from that discussion, personally.
I think the request...
I'm kinda over that.
The reas- the request that we just got has nothing to do with the ordinance, that would be more with the long-term policy, so the ordinance, whether it changed or not, doesn't affect that one.
The thing I'm wondering, um, and, just to answer the, the email, could we respond, basically, at this point in time, the city's not interested in taking over any public, sorry, any private streets, let the council come up, uh, and staff come up with whatever final decision, and then it, they can reapply or, or request, send another request in at a future date, once we have a better idea of where we're headed.
Can't you say that doesn't meet our standards, right? Like, we're not interested, I would just finish with that, I think we need to keep saying that, that doesn't meet our standards.
Right, yeah, exactly, we're not taking over private streets, cause they don't meet our, our minimum standards, and then, with the, the councils taking this under consideration, you know, feel free to, uh, request this again in a few months, I mean, the street's not going anywhere.
Well, that's, that's what we're hoping, right?
That's the problem.
Okay, there's a lot of stuff going on, so, yes to that, um, the, so what I'm hearing, though, is a version of make new develop, uh, um, setting a policy that says that, uh, we would wanna look at making it so that new developments over a certain size, whatever that means, we'll have to work on what that means, um, we kinda heard the twenty-five units, but we'll try to see if there's something, what those standards could potentially be, would have to meet city standards, below that, it wouldn't nee- need to for the street, and then also, working on saying that we're not gonna take over private roads unless they, unless they do meet our standards, and those are the two things that we need to work on. I don't know, that, it would appear then to say, though, that, that does prevent people in the meantime from, um, applying for projects that would have private streets, right? It, it just depends on, is the council wanting this staff to go back, make edits, and bring it back in its current form, or would the council prefer, for a longer time period, it gets brought back essentially as an action item to be denied, um, and then a new, a new process is started while we figure out what that looks like for these, where that cutoff is for where private streets are permissible and where they're not.
But we can't do anything tonight, right?
No, it is just a discussion, I have no action to be taken tonight.
Again, personally, I'm comfortable on the, uh, time and kind of restarting the process, uh, with, for once, for Stoddard Street, I know we wanna get away from it, but, uh, yeah, the street's gonna be there, that's not gonna make or break anything, and I also think for this development, it's unlikely to make or break anything in this, in our city, and so I'm, I'm like, I would rather restart, we can tell Stoddard we're working on something, allows, from my understanding, allows these folks to kind of continue to move forward, and then we can continue to work on this, that's where I'm at, but...
Any disagreement? Garrett, were you saying that we have to formally bring it back to kill it, to, to not approve it in order to end that, or by general discussion, can we just say it's ended? We can't take any action tonight. Well, but if we never bring, if we just aren't bringing it back, or, I mean, is that a...
No, it lasts for six months, I think, is what it, it doesn't...
This is, this is different than a moratorium.
Okay.
So, there is no temporary land use, this is under a different doctrine, that essentially, once something is brought forward as a text amendment, no one can vest until that text amendment is resolved. So, the, the cleanest, the cleanest way to leave, remove all doubt about what's going on would be to bring it back for an action item.
And can you do that at our next meeting in two weeks, like, and then we can have the broader discussion of the policy that the mayor wants, one way or another, like, bring back to us in two weeks exactly what was before the planning?
Yeah.
And zoning commission, and we can say yes or no, whatever, how those votes go, and then, and figure the longer-term policy later.
And then we'll work on that other stuff. Right, Garrett, that's what you're... Whatever you want, so, yes. But yes, it would be cleanest to bring it as an action item or public hearing, whatever's necessary for this, next time, the council can make whatever decision it makes, one way or the other, and then, um...
If we vote no, then that can restart the process, then we can continue to have this conversation.
Yes.
Let's do that.
Or rather, if we vote yes on the denial, as we did earlier, real compromise.
Have you got direction there?
Yes.
All right, great, great.
It only took forty-five minutes.
All right, um, moving into the consent agenda, we've got two items, consider minutes of April sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four, and setting the date and time, May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four, at seven PM, for a public hearing to consider adoption of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget for Midvale City, beginning July first, twenty-twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, is there a motion to...
Mayor, I motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, uh, to approve the consent agenda, any discussion on that, Rory, would you call roll, please?
Councilmember Billings.
Yes.
Glover.
Aye, here, whatever, I'm tired.
Robinson.
Yeah. Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that passes, thank you, uh, moving into our first action item, consider resolution number twenty-twenty-four, R twenty-two, authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of concurrence with the Wasatch Front Regional Council for Parks and Open Space Plan. Would we like to just motion that, or do we have questions?
What?
Oh, yes.
Just give us, like, two minutes of what it means.
Adam? You're, you're two minutes, and Juana's gonna time you.
Yeah, let's, let's get the timer going.
I like it.
Time's up. Oh, but now I can't show the...
Oh, it's fine, damn it.
Okay, so, in short, we applied through WFRC to, um, receive funding to do a Parks and Open Space Master Plan, part of this would be the preparation of an IFFP, which is an impact fee facility plan, which would lead then the next step towards, um, Parks and Open Space impact fees, um, we were awarded this, uh, funding for the study with our portion, uh, I believe being forty thousand, uh, this was actually already budgeted in the previous year, but we're carrying it over, uh, because of the way the applications fell and whatnot, so the funding is already there, and, uh, we'll be working with WFRC, this is an action to allow the mayor to sign a letter of concurrence, that we will be working with WFRC, um, and moving forward, they would like to start, uh, July first, or as soon as possible to that date, because that's when, um, their funding will also be available, so.
That sounds great, I just want, uh, as soon as we have, I assume they'll do public meetings with this?
Oh, yeah, it'll be like other studies that we're doing, uh, this is just the first step in that, is allowing the council, authorizing the mayor to sign that letter of concurrence.
I think it sounds awesome, I move that we approve resolution number twenty-twenty-four, R twenty-two, authorizing the mayor to sign the letter of concurrence with Wasatch Front Regional Council for the Parks and Open Space Master Plan.
Second.
Your motion and a second, any further discussion, Rory, would you please call roll?
Yes, Councilmember Glover.
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye. Brown?
Yes.
Gettle?
Yes.
Billings? Yes.
All right, that passes, item B, consider resolution number twenty-twenty-four, R twenty-three, authorizing Meyer to, the mayor to send a letter of concurrence to the Wasatch Front Regional Council for the Porter-Rockwell Trail Plan, Johnny, you got one minute?
Um, so this is, uh, similar grant that was also applied for, and that we received, um, to the, the Parks Master Plan, um, this is for the Porter-Rockwell Trail Study, um, if you recall our canal trail feasibility study that just finished last summer, um, it's gonna be very similar to that, where they're, we're gonna have a consultant, whoever we end up getting, they're gonna basically do a feasibility study to see what we could potentially put next to the tracks line to extend the Porter-Rockwell Trail from Sandy to the Murray border.
Do we know how many feet that is?
A lot.
Is it?
I mean, not the whole trail, I mean, like, in the Midvale portion, it's not, from the sandy border to that, it's not...
I had a map, but one, the timer, so, but it'd be the tracks line essentially from where the East Town Village is, all the way to where Cottonwood and, and the Cottonwood Street is on, at Murray border, and this isn't for, like, design or anything of the, it's just more of seeing if it's even a possibility to build a trail there, to extend it.
Can't wait, I move that we approve resolution number twenty-twenty-four, R twenty-three, authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of concurrence with Wasatch Front Regional Council for the Porter-Rockwell Trail Plan.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion, Rory, would you call roll, please?
Yes, Councilmember Glover.
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
Gettle?
Yes.
And Billings?
Yes.
Okay, that passes, thank you, well, we don't have a closed session, we do have an RDA and an NDA meeting, so let's get going, is there a motion to adjourn the council?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, uh, all favors say aye.
Yes.
All right, uh, all right, we're gonna jump right into RDA, welcome, everybody, it's ten fifty-eight PM, uh, Rory, would you call roll, please?
Yes, Board Member Glover.
Here.
Billings.
Here.
Gettle?
Here.
Brown?
Thank you, Rory, uh, we'll move right into public comments, any person wishing to give a public comment on any item that otherwise scheduled for public hearing, may address the redevelopment agency of Midvale City at this time, by separating the microphone and stating your name for the record, do we have any public comments? Saying none, we'll move on to the consent agenda with two items, item A, consider minutes of April sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four, and item B, set date and time, May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four, at seven PM, for a public hearing to consider adoption of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget of the redevelopment agency of Midvale City, beginning July first, twenty-twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Mayor, I motion we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, any discussion, Rory, would you call roll, please?
Yes, Board Member Brown.
Yes.
Gettle?
Yes.
Glover?
Aye.
Billings?
Yes.
Robinson?
Aye.
All right, that passes, um, I'm trying to read these fast, I feel like I should've studied for those commercials, you know, when they reveal the side effects at the end, that's what I wanted to be doing, uh, our public hearing tonight, public hearing to receive public comment regarding the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five tentative budget of the redevelopment agency of Midvale City, beginning July first, twenty-twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, even though this says, Mariah, we're gonna hear from Cody. Take voice, sir.
Unless there's a big reveal.
Yeah, sorry to disappoint, but you get me. Little bit, yeah, all right, thank you, Mayor, thank you, council, so for our...
All right, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. So for our tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, I just wanted to go over some of the highlights from the budget from each account. RD operations, no significant deviations from fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Um, so basically, very similar line items. Um, I mean, all the same line items, similar funding, um, as you saw in your packet. Um, Bingham Junction project area, uh, one point six million for public improvements. That's really directed towards the Main Street North entrance. You probably haven't missed it. Uh, one point one million transferred to the Main Street CDA, um, for the revolving loan program, mostly. And then fulfilling obligations to developers, taxing entities, and affordable housing. Uh, the Bingham Junction, um, the Jordan Bluffs, it's just barely been online just a couple of years. This is year four. Um, and it's just fulfilling its obligation to developers, taxing entities, and affordable housing. So it's not really doing anything fancy yet, but, um, that is our budget for Jordan Bluffs project area. Uh, Main Street is a lot of fun, and we're doing a lot of fun things there. A million dollars towards the revolving loan program, uh, six hundred seventy thousand towards project area improvements, uh, three hundred forty thousand towards property acquisition, a quarter million towards parking structure. And that's the, gonna be the design of the parking structure, uh, adjacent to, or I guess kitty quarter to us, adjacent to the senior center, and a hundred thirty-five K towards public art. And then citywide housing, uh, four million in affordable housing incentives, and, uh, just over half a million for housing programs and the home repair loan program. And that is a big, um, I know a concern in Utah, but, uh, one that I have, we're getting a lot of money for affordable housing. A lot of money is coming in from Bingham Junction. Uh, twenty-five percent of the total budget is for affordable housing, twenty-five percent of Jordan Bluffs, and twenty percent of the Main Street CDA. And so, um, I want to aggressively spend down, so we don't end up on a pile of affordable housing dollars that looks bad, but more so is not doing anyone any good to, um, help increase the supply of affordable housing.
Real quick, uh, the four million, i- is your goal to try to spend that down in the next fiscal year then?
Yes.
Okay. And then while you're on this, two hundred eighty-five thousand for housing programs, is that down payment assistance? Cause home repair loan program is broken out on its own.
Yeah, it is. So the, the housing programs, yeah, that's the down payment assistant program is really what that is, and that's administered by Housing Connect. Yeah. And then I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I've asked this last year, what's the recreation amenity program?
So what that is, 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 that is to go into an area, a lower income area, and identify a need for an amenity, a recreational amenity, and, and provide that. And so that is, is what that is for. And I don't, I believe we've programmed money every year, but we haven't actually spent it yet, but we would like to do that. Good. Any other questions?
Mayor, I move that we open public comment.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to open public comment on this item. On favor, say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Public comment is open. Do we have any public comments?
Mayor, I move that we close public comment.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to close. On favor, say aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
You all are no fun. Say any yeses. Public comment is closed. Move into our action item. Consider resolution number twenty twenty-four fourteen, RDA, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-five tentative budget of the redevelopment agency of Midvale City beginning July first, twenty twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Rory, would you call roll, please?
Yes, Board Member Kettle?
Yes.
Glover?
Aye.
Billings?
Yes.
Uh, Robinson?
Aye.
And Brown?
Yes.
Okay, that passes, thank you. Uh, we don't have a closed session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All favor, say aye.
Yes.
Yes.
And we're adjourned. We do have the NDA. Welcome, everybody. It's eleven oh four PM, our favorite meeting of the night. Uh, Rory, if you would call roll tonight.
Yes, Board Member Robinson.
Yes? Here?
Kettle?
Here.
Billings?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
And Glover?
Here.
Thank you. We're all here. At least physically. All right, move into public comments. Any person wishing to comment on any item not otherwise scheduled for a public hearing on the agenda may address the municipal building authority of Midvale City at this point by separating the microphone and stating your name for the record.
Never has. Never.
Is that not ever been on record?
Never for NBA.
One day. All right, saying none, we'll move into the consent agenda with two items. Consider minutes of December sixth, twenty twenty-three, and set the date and time, May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, at seven PM for a public hearing to consider adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget of the municipal building authority of Midvale City beginning July first, twenty twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Mayor, I approve, uh, move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Rory, would you call roll, please?
Yes, Board Member Brown.
Yes.
Kettle?
Yes.
Glover?
Aye.
Billings?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, that passes, thank you. Uh, we do have a public hearing. Public hearing to receive public comment regarding the fiscal year twenty twenty-five tentative budget of the municipal building authority of Midvale City beginning July first, twenty twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. All right.
Here's the tentative budget. The main change is that that's, this is where the bond payment is made for the street lighting fund, so that's fallen off. So the budget is, uh, significantly decreased, um, from about six hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to just under four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and again, that, uh, decreased the amount that the general fund had to subsidize this, the NBA, and that's really the changes.
Mayor, I move that we open public comment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to open public comment. On favor, say aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Public comment is open.
Mayor, I move that we close public comment.
Second.
Okay, seeing the public comment, there is a motion and a second to close public comment. On favor, say aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, public comment is closed. Um, before we wrap up, Bonnie, this is your first NBA. Do you want to say something for, to mark the occasion?
Memorialize it?
In twenty-five minutes or less.
I'm honored.
You're honored. Thank you, thank you. All right.
State your name.
Moving into our action item, consider resolution number twenty twenty-four zero-one, NBA, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-five tentative budget of the municipal building authority of Midvale City beginning July first, twenty twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Rory, would you call roll, please?
Yes, Board Member, oh, Quinn Sperry's in there. Uh, Brown?
Yes.
Kettle?
Yes.
Glover?
Aye.
Billings?
Yes.